Yeah, but if he can't, a lot of them, if he doesn't say, he can't continue. It'll be Richard and Chris. All right, let's just, we're gonna start. Welcome everyone to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight. March 10, 2021, it is 6:30, 2 PM, and we're apparently on online. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. Veronica, just say yes. Debonese?
Here.
Jim Akabachi?
Yeah.
Richard Temple?
Yes.
Chris Conti?
Yes.
And also present, we have our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland, and independent consulting professional engineer, Mr. Charlie, Charles Rowley. Quick, we have the meetings for February 24th. Did somebody review them?
I did, Naz. They look fine. I can make a motion to accept as presented.
Do you have a second?
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris Conti. All in favor, say aye. Jim? Richard? Chris?
Aye.
And Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, Naz, aye. For the record, did I say my name? Also present, Naz Alcalasi, also present on the meeting, for the record.
Jacob is, Jake Morrison is coming online now.
Okay, once we see him. All right, so we're gonna start the public hearing, 5-21, Robert M. Marlene. Stones, special permit or variance, 12 Kennedy Street. Map 78 lot 2-130.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on March 10, 2021, at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 5-21 for a special permit or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1352 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Robert W. and Mary Ellen L. Stone of 4 Lantern Lane, North Reading, Mass. proposing to raise the existing dwelling and reconstruct a larger residential structure located at 12 Kennedy Street, Wareham, Mass., assesses map 78 lot 2-130 in the RF30 zoning district.
All right, who's here for Mr. Mrs. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, Dave DeVignan, representing from Schneider, DeVignan, and Leoni.
Okay, state your case, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With me this evening is Robert and Mary Ellen Stone. They are the property owners.
Okay, very good.
Their family has owned the property for generations. The cottage on the property was constructed circa 1945. The lot is approximately slightly less than 8,000 square feet in size. The proposal before you this evening is to remove the existing cottage from its existing foundation and then to construct a two-story replacement dwelling on that foundation. The cottage is located outside of the flood zone based upon FEMA maps, but based upon actual survey, topographical survey information, located within the flood zone. The foundation itself will remain in place. The proposal is to fortify the structural integrity of the foundation by installing helical anchors inside the foundation and then a concrete pad will be poured inside that foundation as a, to lift the crawl space floor. And then we will install FEMA hydrostatic flood openings to comply with the FEMA requirements for construction within a flood zone. The proposal is to utilize the existing footprint, which primarily is more or less 20 by 26 in size, 524 square feet is what we calculated. There'll be a second floor added to the first floor, which would be slightly less in size due to the architectural elements of the second floor. So essentially, there's no increase in footprint outside of a small one-foot by five-and-a-half-foot bump out or gas fireplace. The existing dwelling complies with zoning setbacks relative to the street setback, the rear setback, and the westerly side setback. It is non-conforming to the east setback. It is 7.4 feet off of that eastly property line instead of the 10-foot minimum requirement. So the building inspector has reviewed the project and he has determined that the second floor addition or expansion, if you will, requires a special permit because it's a non-conforming structure. We have received approval from the conservation commission nearly a year ago for the proposal before you. So this evening, we are seeking a special permit from the zoning board to move ahead with the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Well, it'll be special permit if the boards agree. It's a special permit. So we're gonna start one at a time. So apparently for the record, so Richard will be Richard will be sitting on Mr. Morrison's seat and Mr. Conti will be sitting on Walter's seat. So they'll both be voting. Well, let's start. Jim? Jim, yeah?
My only question is, the last speaker said it's a non-conforming structure. What makes the structure non-conforming?
The easterly side setback is 7.4 feet from the overhang to the eastly property line. So it does not meet the 10-foot minimum requirement.
But so it's an existing non-conformity?
That's correct, and we will not be going any closer with the reconstruction than what exists today.
My only question.
Richard?
Are you gonna use the existing foundation?
Yes, sir.
That foundation gonna make it through the demolition? Went by there today. It seems like it's old block. Is it you concerned about any damage to the foundation at all or expecting any damage?
I will defer to the architect who is with us this evening, Michael Silva.
Hello, I'm Michael Silva with MJS Architecture. I developed the drawings. The, that was our main concern. That was the reason for going with the helical piles about two feet within the existing foundation. Those piles will go in. There'll be beams set across those and the house will basically kiss the top of the existing foundation for that reason, just the structural integrity to make sure it doesn't go anywhere.
So basically that, so the foundation is there, not for structures or those coils or whatever your screws you're putting in, those will definitely support the building and by pouring the pad inside, you're figuring it, anchors it down. So I'm good with that, sir.
Yeah, the helicals, the helicals themselves will do the job. We had to keep the existing per conservation. We had to keep the existing foundation, whether we used it or not, that had to stay. So that's what we're doing and this is sort of how we're getting around that structural inadequacy of the existing foundation, the integrity of it.
Good answer to me. Thank you, sir.
Chris?
I'm all set. Thanks. No question.
Veronica, are you there?
I am. I, I like the project. I don't think it's more detrimental. I was wondering though, so you'll have access to the basement, right? Because I didn't see any utilities on the first or second floor. So I'm assuming they're gonna be in the basement.
And mechanical, in the trusses, in the attic will be also, there'll be a water pump in the basement that would be in an enclosure existing and then the water side underneath the existing deck, part of the flood openings, there'll be a access underneath that way, but it'd be just that. I think we only have maybe three feet to play with there.
That's correct. It'll be a three-foot crawl space by the time we pour the floor and the slab will be set at the existing grade on the water side. So it will strictly be a very shallow crawl space for access for utilities and very minor storage.
Anyway, Veronica, they can't have utilities below flood, so, and their top elevation 1446 and the flood is 814. That's illegal to have it. They have to be first floor or attic.
All right. I was just wondering where they were gonna be because I didn't see them in the plan.
Yeah, the mechanicals can go up. The section that you see there is, it does show truss rafters going through, but the center core of the shed dormer on the roof will be attic trusses, which will give us a little bit over four feet by the width of the structure to house all the mechanical. There'd be plenty of room up there.
Anyway, our zoning officer, that's his jurisdiction, he'll be dealing with this. We'll just stick with zoning. I mean, the building commissioner, that's all building code. I'm gonna move to the public. Anyone wanna speak in favor of this project? Anyone wanna speak against this project? I hear none. Before, before we move to close, you wanna, Mr. DeVignan, you wanna say anything or the architects?
No, sir. I think I'm good.
Good. Okay, if everybody's okay unless you wanna state something, any board members?
Do we have to make a determination if this is detrimental, if this is a special permit?
Yeah, we're closed. If nobody has a question, let's close.
Don't move.
Motion to close by Jim, second?
Second, Veronica Debonese.
All in favor to close, say aye, Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, Naz, aye. Okay, now, if there's no discussion, we could vote to see if, to give them relief on Section 1352. If you guys believe it's not detrimental, we'll treat it as a special permit unless you feel it's otherwise. If you feel it's a variance, so whatever the wishes of the board.
Leave it to be non-detrimental, move to be a special permit.
Okay, I have a motion to go to special permit by Jim. I have a second.
Second, Veronica Debonese.
Okay, all in favor, say aye to move as a special permit. Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's a special permit. Any discussion before we make any motions? I hear none, so what's the wishes?
Move to grant standard conditions.
And defining non-detriment, not, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay, that's a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second, Richard Temple.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Conti?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, Naz, aye. It carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome. 6-21, Jackie Nichols, variance, 3A, Mod Palmer Drive.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on March 10, 2021, at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 6-21 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625, and Article 13, Section 1361 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to the Jackie Nichols of 3A, Mod Palmer Drive, Wareham, Mass. proposing to construct a new accessory structure located at 3A, Mod Palmer Drive, Wareham, Mass., assesses map 84, Lot 5A, in the MR30 zoning district.
Mrs. Nichols then? Hi, Jackie.
Evening, everybody. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm here representing myself.
Just your name for the record, Jackie?
As Jackie Nichols.
Okay, very good. Just for the record, I did talk to Mrs. Nichols about the tunnel. I drove by to look at the area. Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, I'm asking for relief from zoning in order to locate a 12-by-16 garden shed in my yard. And the reason for this is that I don't have access to a rear and that doesn't comply with current zoning. I have I'm in a condex, which is two condos stuck together. And as part of the master deed, we have exclusive use of our part of the yard, so I don't have access to any other part of the yard. Also, I am limited as to where I can put this by the slope of the land. Oh, that's very helpful. Unfortunately, it's not color. Unit 3A, which is in the center of your screen, is our unit. Anything behind there goes to Unit 3B and I do not have access to. So in front of that, where I've drawn the 12-by-16 is where I'm proposing to put my shed. To the right of that, you'll see our existing driveway easement. That's actually a little road that goes off of Mod Palmer and there are the driveways of four families off of that road. I don't access, my driveway doesn't access directly off Mod Palmer. And then I've marked out approximately where the slopes are. The slope is in the stone wall. My shed will be on the side closest to my house. Over to the left of that is another stone wall that comes down the other sideline. And in between those two is all my vegetable gardens, which is what this shed will be servicing. It's just for a garden shed to be used to store equipment and potting shed, that type thing. I think I have a picture of a similar structure that was given to you guys. You just passed it, Ken. Page, maybe 21? Nope, 20?
23.
23 is the site plan.
24, sorry.
24, sorry. Very similar to this, except it's gonna have one door in the front and two doors on the side to get the lawn tractor in.
All right, so very well. Apparently, if you, you guys all know Mrs. Nichols here for a variance for a hardship. I did drive by there. I personally believe she does have a hardship because the shape of the lot. According to our commissioner, accessory building set on the front of a house needs a variance and if you go in her driveway, the, how she accesses the house, the front, the, her left yard, it becomes the left side, not the front back. According to Mod Palmer, it's the front yard. I'm okay with that. Apparently, it does have a hardship. It is unique. It doesn't derogate from the, or intensify of the, of the, our bylaws. So I'll start with Richard. What he thinks. Richard?
Fine with it as far as the shed goes and if it's, hopefully, it's gonna be a tasteful one since that it's sitting right on, almost on the main road, but I'm in favor of it.
It's quite a way, quite a ways back from the road.
70 feet, Richard. If you look at it, 70 feet from the road.
Yeah, I walked out there today. That could be, that could be a little less than 70 feet, but I believe that it's, it's good. Thank you.
I mean, if you wanna ask her to get closer to the house, you can.
I'm good with it. Thank you, sir.
Good with it. Okay, Richard? I mean, Chris?
I also drove by there today and, well, I looked at it on Google first. It looked like she had a bunch of trees that she had taken down there. It was kind of shading it, but those look like they're gone when I rode by there. I was trying to ask, gonna ask about the other side where the other stone wall is, was the side of the property. I noticed the neighbor has like a shed there too, or I thought maybe that might have been a better spot for it, or they kind of went back to back. But I guess that's, that's where, is that where you have your garden? Is that why?
Yeah, I have six raised beds, vegetable beds already established there.
Okay.
And I thought, I also thought.
That's why you can push it back, right? Because the garden?
Gardens, yeah.
So what do you think, Chris?
I guess I don't have any more questions. I guess I'd like to hear any of the neighbors or other.
All right, Veronica?
So I didn't get a chance to drive by. I was thinking I would like to, but the first thing that I think of when I see this, I'm not opposed to the shed being in front of the yard. I don't like the location. It's like smack dab in front of the front of the house. So if you're on Mod Palmer, you're gonna see the back of the shed when you look toward the house. I would prefer to see this shed over near the driveway and closer to the house, so a little further from the main road. So it looks kind of more set back. That's just my opinion. I don't think it should be in the center.
Can I, can I do a screen share?
Yes. Go ahead, Ken, I guess.
Bear with me. This is, this is my first time.
That's okay. Maybe she could turn the shed the other way.
If I turn the shed the other way, I can't get my tracker in it.
Ah, okay.
Okay. Oh, I don't know how to do this. Okay, nevermind.
What do you wanna show us?
Well, I was gonna show, since she didn't get to see the site, how the slope of the site is up. If you're, if you're driving up Mod Palmer, it's not like right there. It's like up, off the road. So you can't really see it all that much until you get up around the corner.
The house is not visible from the street?
It is, but it's up and wave, it's up and down, which I could show you if I could get to my desktop.
If you drive a Mod Palmer, you cannot see half the house enough because it's up as hell and then it's, there's a stone wall, then it goes flat.
Jackie, now to do a screen share, you click the screen share at the bottom of the screen. If you put your mouse to the bottom of the screen, they'll, they'll pop up. It'll say screen share and then you just, you just share the file, the file name, as if you were going to your file manager and opening the file up. If you open up in a Word document or a picture, if that helps.
Can you get to the desktop?
Yeah.
You can directly.
You can't? Or you can?
You can. Go directly to the desktop.
Okay.
Give her a second. Yeah, well, we're looking at, yeah, we're looking at your desktop. And now we're looking at your pictures. Now, if you click on that one, it's opening up.
This is from the corner of where my, the little shared drive that all the families are off of in Mod Palmer. So kind of see where the house is from there. Does that help, Veronica?
I'm not sure where that is. When I look at the stone wall on the drawing, it shows it to the left in the front. That looks like it's to the right.
Well, that's.
Am I missing that?
It goes all the way across. Okay, now let's.
So the driveway would be to the, to the right there, correct?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Just use the X, there you go.
How's that? Is that better? That's from our shared driveway, looking up towards the house on the side of Mod Palmer. What you see on the left there, that's where the stone wall starts and it goes all the way across the front of the house.
Okay, oh, I guess I would, I would refer to the other board members. I haven't driven by there personally. I think it would look better near where you're pulling in your driveway to the, to the right of this picture that you're showing. I guess, I don't, I'm confused by the stone wall here on this one, but I just, it looks odd in the middle of your front yard. I think it would be better placed toward your driveway and then it's not like what you're looking at when you're, but everybody else is driven by.
The problem, let me, Veronica, from my side, her front yard is the driveway. It's not the, the Mod Palmer. See, there you go. There's a little driveway. There's four houses access from it. See, if you're looking at her, at the site plan, see, she goes on the existing driveway easement and entered the house. So that's, the front yard is where, where she's put on the shed is basically her left of her yard, not the front. Because our address is Mod Palmer, it's in the front because.
Sure, I understand that, but I'm thinking about the people that are off of Mod Palmer that are looking at the back of the shed in the middle of a yard.
Okay, can you, Jackie, can you plant a couple of abreviations behind it?
Well, I intend to be putting shrubs and stuff behind it on the other side of the stone wall anyway.
Okay.
I also did this.
This is good.
Yeah.
So the blue stripes here and as they said, as the other gentleman noted, the trees that you see here are no longer here. They were all diseased and everything. We had to take all, but I was able to save one down. The blue here indicates approximately where the shed will be because obviously it's on an angle. And then there's stone walls here. There's a stone wall here and also down here. Then this is how we access our property is over here. All the gardens it'll service will be over here and then I have blueberry bushes over here. So I want to be able to come in and put my tractor in it right over here. So here is the roadway. Now, there's a slope up here too, so.
So a little too, right there where your arrow is a little more to the left, I think it would be better placed there in terms of visibility from the street from Mod Palmer.
I agree.
Right, okay.
Sorry, I don't know what happened there.
So were you guys saying she is 40 feet away from the house? 78? 78?
Her arrow is Naz. Can you see where her arrow is there, like to the right?
But you need, look at this.
That's right where, that's, there's a slope there. I can't put it, it was not level to drive the tractor in it there. Yes, over here is level. Let me show you again.
You guys can look at this plan quick and then we talk some numbers. You should have it in your packet.
The plan that's in the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, okay, I saw that.
Now she, okay, she's 40 feet from the house and 78 from the driveway. So what do you, what do you like to see, like coming from her driveway, go to 68, 65 and go like another 10 feet and maybe? I mean, you gotta give some numbers.
I would think so. I would think, you know, a little closer to the, to where the driveway is and a little more to the right.
Number, give a number so we tell.
Okay, so maybe 25 feet from the driveway edge and maybe 58 from I, I don't know. I just think it would look better to the right.
Do you understand what she's trying to say? So move it towards the driveway like 15, 20 feet and towards the house like 15. Would that work for you?
If I move it towards the house, I'm gonna lose whatever yard I have. I have it, the way that I have it situated is near the, right near the stone wall.
Yeah.
So if I move it closer to the house, it's gonna be like right in the middle of my yard.
Oh, I get you.
Oh, the stone wall. So it's close to the stone wall. Could you ever?
It's right about five feet from the stone wall. Exactly. So if we, if you guys wanna want her to plant some giant abreviations behind it, she says she's gonna put shrubs. It won't be visible from the road. We'll listen to the neighbors, see if anybody's have a problem with it. I understand what she's saying. If she puts it, and if she moves it towards the house, she's gonna lose her yard. She goes towards her driveway. It's a slope. So it's, 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 that's, that's, that's her hardship, pretty much the shape of the wall.
Ask about the land in the back.
The land in the back, she has a garden.
The land in the back isn't hers. It's a condex. Don't forget it's a duplex. It's not, it's not a single family. She gets one side, they get the other.
Jackie, do you have the site plan?
I don't have it on mine. You, you have it. Oh, you mean?
Let me, let me listen. Let's, let me talk, see from the public while everybody think it over. Anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project, this shed on this project? I hear none. Anyone wanna speak against? I also hear none.
Naz, I'm curious.
Sure, sorry.
Are there any, are there any neighbors or is there, is there anybody just standing by listening with no comment?
Yeah, I'm a neighbor. I live at 6.
Your name, sir? Your name, sir? Name and address?
Andrew Gobbins.
Yeah. And the address?
6 Mod Palmer Drive.
Six, and that is the house after?
It's if you were driving right up the road and you went straight, you'd run straight in my house, into my house.
Okay, so what'd you like to say?
Well, I was just concerned about, you know, like what the other lady brought up, you know, that the shed's gonna be, you know, like when we go up and down the road, we'll see it, you know?
Now, would you be okay if she put shrubs around it and either with shrubs? Unfortunately, trees died. You wouldn't, if the trees were still there, nothing would be seen. How about if she put some evergreens?
Yeah. Yeah, I know. They take a while to grow too, you know.
She put a giant abreviations, they're probably six to eight feet. They grow a couple of feet a year.
Yeah. How big is the shed?
Twelve by sixteen.
Twelve by fifteen?
Sixteen. And then the height, the height, like probably the walls are eighty eight inches or eight. And so the top gable, the top you're talking about eight and four, maybe twelve feet tops to the top.
Yeah. I don't know. It's hard to say whether I would stake them the yard. I mean, I built commercial buildings and stuff, so I'm a builder. So curious, you know, this depends what it really looks like.
Right, so you you familiar with giant abreviations? If she plants some giant abreviations, say six of them in the back in a couple of years, you won't. If she put a six footers, a couple of years, you won't see nothing, I would say.
It's it's gonna match the house. It's gonna be the same colors as the house. It's not gonna stick out like a red shed in the middle of the yard. It's gonna be the same color as the house.
All right, let's go back to Veronica, because I guess I'm press have the issue with that. So what do you think? Like I said, you could condition it without abreviations.
What if it were to the left corner where the walls meet? So that, you know, the what I just don't like is seeing it right in the center of the front of the house. It's just kind of like. I mean, it's better that it's with the stone wall. So if the driveway is 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 there, the driveway is on a slope or it's not on a slope?
Slight slope, very slight. That's how it's where it starts to slow.
Yeah. So I mean, I I think if the shed were put there, perhaps turned a different way to get the tractor in. If there's a slight slope, maybe at the back of the shed or whatever, and it's facing the yard, but it's tucked toward as much to the right as possible so that you're right before the yard slopes. You're not using that part of your yard anyway. And it's not detracting from your yard because you want to still have your yard. I just don't like it where it is.
I tell you what, why don't we? Why don't we continue the hearing? And maybe sometimes you coordinate, Chris apparently is against that and Veronica. Maybe you guys walk the yard with her. You can two people. Would that work?
Yeah, I would like to go and see it actually, the the site.
I have I have the pad, you know, for the shed all staked out.
Yeah, so that's a plus. You could see what it's going.
Okay. And that goes for you too, sir. Mr. Robbins, you're you're more than welcome to, you know, take a look.
Okay, I would be interested in taking, I guess, a closer look on it. I I do kind of agree with with Veronica. I was thinking maybe maybe more towards the driveway and more towards the pavement they have there on that side. Or I was hoping like way on the other side near lot six, where I think that gentleman spoke. I think he has a white shed there. I thought it would like go good, like kind of behind his in the back facing each other would be a better spot. But is it possible that you could move a raised bed to another location and put it there?
I have six raised beds.
Well, maybe we could walk it and just kind of talk about it while we're there.
Sure.
Yeah, so let's do this. Jimmy, I I'm sorry. I didn't listen much of your comments.
It's all right. I didn't. I heard enough of everybody else's.
Okay, anyone anyone else in the audience wanna speak on this matter? All right, so so you guys coordinate. You know where to find Jackie. Maybe she could email you her phone number and go see it. And we'll talk next hearing on March twenty fourth. Okay, can I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, I have a second.
I second Chris County.
Thank you, by Chris, all in favor to continue March twenty fourth. Say aye, Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And Nazee, aye. So it's continued. All right, thank you, Jackie. So that'll coordinate with you to go see only two people on site, whoever goes, just Chris and Veronica. Okay, all right, so we're gonna continue public hearing. Thank you, Jackie. It's all set. You can watch.
I I don't need to keep interrupting you, but I think your comment about only two people on site bears merit. I think I I understand why you said it because of the open meeting rules.
Right, can be more than two people.
I just I'm just I'm just making sure the elephant in the room was heard loud and clear. That's all.
If you schedule a time, certain you can have anybody come as many people as want to come to the site and visit at the same time.
Right, but then you have to publicize.
It has to be. It has to be agreed right now, right?
That's right.
And they're gonna they're gonna agree offline.
All right, so actually, Richard, he don't, he could go by himself.
I've already been by there.
I've been by myself. Everybody can go by themselves, but two together only, not more than two. All right, so we continue, like again, everybody can go by themselves, but not more than than two people at the same time. But that person can go with you, Jim, then go Richard. That's it. The two only two. All right, so we can do, we'll go back to continue public hearing thirty six dash twenty. Stephen Webby, get off Attorney Morton, five Tyler F. Is attorney attorney Morton. She's right there. Public hearing still open. So fill us back in where were we last time and let's continue. And for the record, again, this one, Chris County will speak on this and Mr. Sample. They have been since day one on that, so they could vote on it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Gillian Moore in one eighty four Main Street. I'd love to start, if I can start, Ken, with a picture of the site, just to kind of again, bring everyone back to that. If I can share my screen, it's just the visual of the site from Google. If I can get that going. Great. Does everyone see it or they see a blank screen?
I can see it.
Right, so this is five Tyler Ab, just to bring everyone back to this property. The history being that it was a single family home and then actually a border boarding house, a sober house, then it had the fire. We originally started with this project looking for a three family and understanding and taking comments in from the board regarding a three family being too much for that lot. So we sent revised plans for a two family, understanding that still warrants a variance in front of the board. So we're here seeking determination on that. And I'd love to also have a discussion while the commissioner is here as well regarding single family use. Just because this is is obviously an undersized lot and wondering about the grandfather of it even as a single family. You know, my client's looking to to develop this this land that's really been an eyesore for the town. And we wouldn't want to get into it and it's somehow the grandfathering to be lost as well. So if we could have a discussion on that, I'd really love that. You know, there's not really more information other than we're again, seeking the two family, but at the very least, getting some sort of approval for for the one family. You know, per the bylaws, the grandfathering, this would, it's a single, it's an MR thirty. But just as far as a single family use too, it's an undersized lot. So did that get lost? Because the last time the fire, I believe, was in two thousand and fourteen. So if the commissioner could speak to that, that would be great as well. Thank you.
David, do you hear?
Yes, I did.
Yes, can you clarify that, David?
Yeah, so I'm not sure exactly what the question is, but as far as if it's grandfathered for a single family, it is.
Okay.
It will be protected for the use that was currently in place at the time it became nonconforming. If you were to change the use from a single to a two family, you would have to abide by the land use increase requirements, which in this case is what throws you off. At at the absolute, in your case, the worst case here would be that you would be protected for a single family.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. It's just something that I just wanted, at least on the record, you know, not coming and having to not get approved on a two family and then have to come back trying to seek it for a one family, obviously. You know, we want to do something with this property. It's been like this for quite a bit. On the two family and the original plan, and maybe I can stop. I can. I mean, you you know, the site, it's boarded up. Definitely a hazard. I can stop sharing my screen. It's not necessarily stare at that. The two family that we had submitted obviously has a lot less of an area than the three family. This is MR thirty. There are a lot of, I've submitted all the different three families, two families, four families in this actual area of town, which borders the CS Commercial Strip right there on Cranberry Highway. It's right bordering there. So I would say it's definitely not without warrant that this property could be used as a two family. But I think if there are more questions on that, but we're looking to to get some sort of vote tonight regarding the two family.
All right, we'll go back to this this argument. So we're gonna go to Jim, see what he thinks.
I I've got some mixed emotions on this one and I guess the intention of the buy of the potential buyer, because the applicant is is in front of us as a potential buyer. He hasn't bought the property yet, I believe. So I think the intention is to purchase this property and collect rent out of whatever he builds. So I draw a conclusion, be it correct or incorrect, that this is possibly somebody that collects rents and that's maybe they have other investment properties that they collect rents on. And if that's the case, I'd like to know that. And if they are, I'd like to know what those properties are. And if possible, I'd like to even see some pictures of them.
Mr. Chairman, to direct question then through Jim. In the initial submission, we did submit, I believe, there's one in Swiss Beach. I think it was actually a four family. So there there's a picture of a similar build that he did. And obviously he does operate that as well and does collect rent in. I can send that again as well.
If it's in the origin, if it's, excuse me, if it's in the original folder, I'll look, is that is that the extent of his whole? I just, I'm just curious, I don't, you know, just trying to get a feel for the applicant.
It's an investment property. That's bottom line, yes, right, Counselor?
And then he does operate it, it wouldn't then be so.
That's my only question. As far as far as it being a single family home, I don't think there's much to contest. As far as a multifamily home, I think my concern is, you know, you know, I always thought you needed a lot more land to have a septic system. I'm not border health. We're not border health. We're zoning. I just surprised that there's a engineered system that can support a two family at that location without going on to municipal sewage. That's my only comment.
All right, oh, yeah, that that one she's showing, that's a rose point on Agnes. That's the other building. Anyway, we let the council, I mean, border health decide on that subject. Richard, Richard, what do you have comment?
To lose time.
Not then, Chris?
So so for a two family need, what what is it, forty five thousand square feet?
Yeah, two hundred feet of front, yeah.
Yeah, so and they have what eighteen thousand and a half or so? So we're talking about thirty seven thousand square feet difference? Seems like quite a lot to be asking for. I don't know. I guess I don't have any more questions.
Okay, Veronica?
Yeah, I I I feel the same as the statements that I've made previously, which would be in line with what Mr. Conti has just stated.
Okay. And I guess that you have a counselor. What do you want to do? Want to withdraw or you want to vote?
We're looking for a vote, Mr. Chairman.
You're looking for a vote? Okay, just for the records also, if there's a fire, there's no statute of limitation to rebuild it. You know, so anyway. Okay, that being said, anyone from the public wants to put input in favor of this project? None? Anyone against? I hear none. That being said, can we move to close?
Yes, so moved.
Close by Mr. Akavachi, I have a second.
Second, Veronica Devenese.
Second, Veronica, all in favor to close, say aye. Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Aye, Veronica Devenese.
And myself, aye, we close. What's 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 the wishes on the board or discussion?
I'm reluctant to make a motion in favor, so I'd rather have somebody else make a motion and I'll make a vote.
I I'm gonna make a motion to deny as presented.
Okay, motion to deny by Veronica. Do I have a second?
I second Chris County.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye, Veronica.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard? Against the deny or with the denial?
You need to turn your mic on.
I can't hear you, Chris. I said, Richard, sorry. All right, okay, Jim?
Aye.
And aye, so it carries us lost. So it's denied and the finding is no hardship, no, doesn't meet statute requirement of section forty A, section ten, I believe. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. All right, thank you. Next one, so this one was lost. Twenty two dash twenty one TGCI Amalaka Conference format, chapter forty B, Setlas Grand. Three one two eight B is the is the representative here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mark Bobrowski. I'm counsel for the applicant. My office is in Concord, Massachusetts.
Hi, Mr. Bobrowski, how are you? Okay, so the public hearing was open last time. We didn't we didn't argue it because we didn't have enough members, so it is open. And for the record, Mr. Sample will sit and Mr. Jake Morrison's seat and Mr. Chris County will sit on Mr. Walter Cruz's seat. So you have five members. That's yours.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna be brief and then I'll be turning this over to Lynn Sweet, who's been shepherding the project so far. She'll give you a more detailed introduction as well as our architect and civil engineer. Now, this is a project located at I believe the address is three one two eight B Cranberry Highway. It's a twenty unit for sale project. Five of the units will be affordable. The project is a duplex, so ten buildings, two units per building. Each each home will have three parking spaces per unit. Lynn will give you a bit more detail and I'd like to reserve the mic to take it back at the end of the presentation to just talk briefly about a for sale forty B and the mechanics of that. Thank you.
I miss sweet.
Good evening. Am I able to share my screen?
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, okay. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Sure. So I'm Lynn Sweet with LDS Consulting Group. We're based in Wellesley. And we're gonna run through a quick presentation of the development. This first page just shows a rendering of what we think one of the duplex units might look like. And I wanted to introduce you to the rest of the team as well. The applicant is David Grossman. Unfortunately, he had a PTA meeting tonight, so wasn't able to join us. The architect who you'll hear from later is Craig Mitchell of CME Architects. And I think our engineer, Brian Grady, is well known to the ZBA. And you just met Mark, who is our the attorney for this project with Blatman, Bobrowski and Haberty. So quickly, just wanted to, I I know that you've had a number of forty Bs in front of you and so wanted to bring you up to speed as to where we are on this particular project. We did have unofficial, I guess officially, we had our first hearing on the twenty fourth, although we did not present. So we did have a number of different meetings with the municipality during the project eligibility review process, including that were arranged by Ken Buckland. We appreciate him doing that. We met with a number of different department heads. And we also met with the housing trust. In addition, one of our team members actually did mail letters to every one of the abutters to let them know who we are, what we were building and elicit some comments. So we have tried to get the project information out there during the preliminary part of this process. And so at this point, the hearing, this part, and again, Mark will probably go into some more details. It's a hundred and eighty day hearing processed. at this point, um, the hearing, th- this part, and and again, Mark will probably go into some more details. It's a hundred and eighty day um hearing processed. Um, what we're asking you is um at the end of the hearing process is to make a finding of fact that less than ten percent of the year round housing units in Wareham um that there are less than ten percent year round housing units on the town subsidized housing inventory, that the applicant is a limited dividend organization, that the applicant has demonstrated site control, um, that the applicant has a project eligibility letter from the subsidizing agency Mass Housing and um that our application was complete. Um. And so this is um a basic orientation of um where the project is, and I think Brian's gonna go into this um a little bit more. It currently is a um a vacant and um a tree tree lot. Um, as Mark meant, twenty um total units, they're duplex units, um so ten buildings. Um, these are units that are really what we're calling age targeted. They are um compact units seventeen hundred to nineteen hundred square feet. The plans are very flexible in the sense that we could have a first floor master um or we could have um all of the bedrooms, I'm sorry, a first floor primary bedroom and or all of the bedrooms could be on the upper floor. So we feel that um it will reach a lot of different populations, people entering the homeownership market, people uh that households that might be to downsize. Um, smaller uh family household sizes um that are looking for less um maintenance. Um.
This is, this sweet, one second, can you? Excuse me, can you change the screen? Who's got the screen control? Can you check, take, there's cute cat in there, but I don't see everybody. Uh, oh, okay, unless you don't, we had the picture of a cat, oh, well, all right.
Can you, can you?
Now we can say it better.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I I moved it over to the one that's right in front of me where my camera is, so that you'll be seeing the side of my head a lot.
Okay.
That, that's interesting. Okay, good to know. So um so I was talking about the fact that we have uh compact units, flexible site designs, trying to reach a lot of different populations, trying to reach a not only a level of affordability on the affordable units, but a level of affordability on the market units as well. Um, in addition, all of the units are accessible at grade, so we think that's another benefit of the project. Um, we believe that each home is gonna have, um, we know that each home is gonna have two garage spaces as well as two surface spaces. Um, with regard to around the cul-de-sac, we believe there's a little bit of room there for some passive recreation and um that there is definitely room for um snow storage and um each unit, as Craig shows you, will have its own outdoor um space in the rear of the building. Um, and um at the end of the day, the project should bring to Wareham on building permit fees, um, other other fees, um and uh some real estate tax revenue um that it doesn't currently see on this lot since it is a vacant lot. Um, there are sidewalks, we put sidewalks in on one side of the roadway, not, you know, not the most walkable location, but within our development is going to be walkable. It'll be professionally landscaped. Um, and I think that this question may have come up um in the peer review. Um, there will be a homeowner association, this will be a condominium style form of ownership. Um, so that the condominium will be in charge of maintaining the roadways and there will be communal space within the um, the uh, the development. However, homeowners will have their own um dedicated space around around their unit. So uh, and that will be spelled out, uh, you know, a little bit farther down the road as to what is common area and what's um, what's referred to as exclusive use area. Um, and one of those common amenities that are that are gonna be paid for by the condo association is is private trash and recycling. Um, the um development um with regard to lighting will be dark sky compliant. Um, all utilities will be placed underground. And um I just wanted to talk a little bit about affordability, um, which is that we do believe in reading the town's housing production plan. Um, the project does meet a number of the housing goals that are set forth in the plan about targeting um different um different income levels and just different age, age levels and different levels of um and adding accessibility. Um, just um by way of reference at based on today's income limits, which may may go up or down in the next month. Um, uh, income limits are set once a year, they tend to be set in March. Um, we've estimated that the in the home prices for the affordable units for the two bedrooms will be two hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred and that the three bedroom units will be just over three hundred thousand. Um, if you would like, we will absolutely request a local preference um for seventy percent of the units from the state uh from the subsidizing agency. Um, and um, the developer will hire a professional lottery com- um agent to administer the um fair housing and a residence selection plan for uh those uh five affordable units. And because it is a homeownership project, only the affordable units get counted on the subsidized housing inventory for the municipality, so that would be the five units.
Miss Sweet, let me interrupt you. Have you reached Wareham Housing to do the lottery if that happens?
Have we?
Reached the Wareham Housing Authority to they could, they've done lotteries before?
We certainly um could consider that. Um, absolutely. Um. Um, I will make a note of that. Um.
Yeah, because how are you gonna qualify the buyers? I mean, uh, the independent consulting you're hiring or to the state? I mean, you could go to the Wareham Housing, they could qualify them.
Sure. So from a, from a process standpoint, the um so today we're seeking in front of you uh the act of the comprehensive permit. Um, once we have the comprehensive permit, we actually go back to the subsidizing agency, which is Mass Housing for what's called final approval. At point in time, um, the developer will prepare the affirmative fair marketing and um residence selection plan. And at that time, they will uh hire a professional lottery agent. So we certainly um can um reach out, but you know, between now and then and find out um whether or not the Wareham Housing Authority has an interest, but the uh, the the plan and the lottery agent are gonna have to be approved by Mass Housing, who is the subsidizing agency. It's just a little premature for that right now, but we just want to assure you that um that the lottery will be conducted by an approved agency. So.
Right, I'm just doing a suggestion. I know I.
Oh, sure.
Uh, we, we, I mean, we'd like to keep it if we can local.
Yeah. Who's the contact there?
Uh, I think I'm, I forgot, they Jackie, her name, I think.
Okay, well, well, we'll definitely follow up on it. No, I think it's a, it's a great suggestion because they they possibly even have people that, you know, from other lotteries that they know that are already interested.
Right. Okay, so keep, sorry.
Yep, so some of this on this next slide, green features are are pretty standard. Um. And I think, uh, you know, the architect and the engineer will probably go into this a little bit, um, a little bit more. Um, so I think I'm gonna turn it over to Craig Mitchell at this point, and Craig, you can just let me know if you want me to change slides.
Uh, thank you, Lynn. Uh, I'm Craig Mitchell from CME Architects in uh Plainville. And we're working on the the plans, the layouts, floor plans, elevations, renderings um for the site, you know, we're still in the preliminary phase, obviously, but if if Lynn, if you could bring up the um, go down to the the rendering and then the floor plan for the first unit. Um, as Lynn mentioned, we have three different um floor plan layouts, all a similar style. Um, kind of a Cape Cod style, one and a half story homes with the with the two car garage, covered porch. Um, the colors of the units are kind of in keeping with, you know, traditional New England style um houses that you see in the area um with gray and blue and green. Um, and we've introduced a couple of different siding materials, um, some some nice uh white trim work uh to, again, more in keeping with what's in the area. Um. If we look, if we go to the floor plan, we actually have three different floor plans. Um, this first one here, we have a first floor master suite um with an open kind of living kitchen, eating, uh, open floor plan concept. Uh, and then a one and a half bathrooms on the first floor. You can see a small laundry room on the first floor as well. Um, and if you go to the second floor on this one, Lynn, uh, we've got two bedrooms upstairs. So this one might be for like a young family with, you know, two kids that we can put upstairs and then they'd have a shared bathroom. Um, so the next floor plan that we have has more of a uh also has a master suite on the first floor. It's a bigger unit. Um, more, again, the open kitchen, living and eating area. Uh, one and a half bathrooms, a laundry room, and this one actually has a study as well, which as you know, a lot of people work at home nowadays, so we get a lot of requests for uh studies in houses uh in design. So on this particular one, we have on the second floor an open loft area with with a single bedroom upstairs. Um, so it's a little bit different than the first one. And then the um, the final plan, if you can go to the next slide right there, you get the um again, some different materials, you know, we're still playing with the colors and so forth, but um this this last one, it has all the bedrooms upstairs. It has uh, has two bedrooms upstairs, but um nothing on the first floor. Um, but again, the open family room, kitchen, eating area, um laundry room, porch, no study. Um, but upstairs, we have a master, a master suite and then a bedroom uh for like a child or, you know, a guest, guest bedroom. And then a separate uh, separate bathroom for that. Um, I think that's it.
Thank you, Craig. I also just, I did want to point out that we had mentioned that there is some, some, you know, private in the rear of the units with uh with the patios.
Private patios for each unit.
All right, we are now gonna turn it over to Brian Grady here about stormwater management and other engineering matters.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh, this is Lynn showing you the existing conditions plan. Uh, three point six acre site off of Red Brook Road. Uh, if you're passing it on Cranberry Highway side, it's been kind of sandwiched between uh Barnacle Bills and Garden Homes East uh to the uh to the top of the page there. Uh, what we're proposing is uh, I think go to the next sheet, Lynn, maybe. Uh, it's a cul-de-sac, it's approximately seven hundred twenty feet long. That's the full distance uh around the cul-de-sac, but from the beginning of Red Brook Road to you know, the center of the cul-de-sac's just over five hundred feet. And we're holding a uniform grade coming down from Red Brook, Red Brook Road, uh three quarters of a percent uniform grade uh coming down uh to the cul-de-sac. We're proposing uh conventional drainage system. We have uh hooded deep sump catch basins which will go down to the uh final set of catch basins at the cul-de-sac. And that'll discharge to the four bay uh in the infiltration basin for uh additional treatment. And then that uh over will overflow into the infiltration area, uh which is that dark mass on the site. Um, it's, uh, I know, uh, we've received a review letter from Charlie Rowley. And I know he has some concerns about the conventional design and the depth of the infiltration basin that we've laid out. Uh, when this project initially started, uh, I've been working with Scott Blackden, who's also a consultant on this project. And we did discuss uh going uh different options for drainage, underground uh chambers, uh so that area could be kind of used as a common area, recreation area, gardening area, a space of that sort. Uh, the costs were found to be somewhat prohibitive, so we've gone more in line with this conventional design. Uh, and where that is located is uh, most of this property is encompassed by a zone two. Uh, you, so that diagonal line that you see cutting through the four bay area is the limits of the zone two, so the uh infiltration basin's outside of the the zone two. Uh, so that's uh the reason for the conventional design for the the stormwater. Uh, all these homes will be served by town water and municipal sewer uh as well, which uh we will make the connection out at the Cranberry Highway. There's a sewer easement that has been left on the adjacent property uh for that event to make that connection. And uh, that's a very quick, brief summary of the project.
All right, uh, very good. I, we, we did.
Thank you. I, could I just add one more comment if you don't mind?
One second, please. Uh, I did receive Mister Rowley's letter. It does make a lot of sense and a lot of comments he made. So that's definitely Mister Rowley, the applicant, as well as Mister Grady, gonna be working it out together. Go ahead, Mrs. Sweet.
We did, um, in in one of our our meetings, there was a suggestion um from the water department, I think, to try and loop the system. And so I just did want to let people know that we tried very hard to contact all of um you know, the abutters to see whether or not there was a way that we could satisfy those those comments and concerns, and we really were not able to get any response on that, but we we appreciated the comments that we heard. Um, but unfortunately, without cooperation from others, we weren't able to um, to amend our plans. So, thank you.
Mister Chairman, just a couple of comments before you turn it over for questions.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll recall the Penrose project that just went through the board. That was a rental project. I was with them on their last two appearances in front of you. I'm happy to say that with the addition of those ninety-three units, your SHI count is going to go from seven point five percent to eight point five percent. So that leaves us eligible for the application. This is a for sale project. I have to confess that I've done you know, probably somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty forty Bs, and I don't remember the last for sale project I did. It was probably before Lee. In Manboro.
Been losing.
Uh, in a for sale project, the rules are slightly different. There, you know, there's a bit more cost certification to be done here. Uh, the applicant is entitled to a fifteen percent profit as developer. And at that point, if it's less than that, the project is uneconomic. The developer can go forward anyway, but the rules were changed about five or six years ago. And then secondly, uh, the developer has a twenty percent profit limitation. Uh, that's a measurement of proceeds and total expenditures. So you save your receipts in a coffee can. And at the end of the day, your gross profits can't be more than twenty percent of your gross expenditures. Um, we did supply Mass Housing with a pro forma that contains all of the information in that regard. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to point out is that this is gonna be a condominium and that we'll be putting together in association with documents accordingly. Uh, each unit will have an exclusive use area, uh, and that's the way the project will be designed. So with that, I'm I'm happy to uh answer any questions and our team is as well.
Did you get, you get your eligibility letter yet? You you have, right?
Yes.
You, and what did, what was the selectman comment when you saw them?
Lynn, can you address that?
Um, there were no comments from the municipality, and as I said, we did have um meetings with both the um department heads and the trust, but there there were no comments.
Selectmen, you guys didn't go before them, they didn't say nothing? No comments?
No, Ken coordinated um the meeting, so we we did not have any comments from the selectmen. They were given a you know, a full notebook, gave the town an electronic copy of the application, like we did for this application as well.
Okay. All right, well, let's start questions as much as we can. Jimmy, you have the first picture in front of me.
Okay, thank you. Um, a few questions. Um, maybe I'm gonna need the the um applicant to through through you, Mister Chair.
Yeah.
My first, my first, my first comment, I don't know if it's a question or just a concern. Um, we're gonna list the number of two bedrooms and the number of three bedrooms, and needless to say, um, three bedroom homes are gonna attract more use on our school system, but I've noticed that the loft tends to exist on the two bedroom plans and could end up being used as a three bedroom, so you count it as a two and you get a three. Um, I know how these lofts get used. That's just a comment. Um, same thing on the car count. We're gonna have four cars per unit, two in the garage and two in the driveway. Two in the garage and two in the driveway, but in order to get the two cars out of the garage, the two cars in the driveway have to go on the street. So. That's a good number. That's a good thing to remember that. Yeah, you can have four cars, but you can only have two in the driveway, two, two. Two are going to end up on the street if you got to get them out of the garage. It's, I don't know if there's going to be any. Condominium rules that about parking cars on the street. And. My next question is, I noticed that in the plan, I didn't see any place where there's going to be a dumpster. Or a recycling bin. They said it's going to be handled by the condo association. But I don't know where that container, that dumpster. For the association is going to be housed or what plans are out for that. So that's kind of a question. And then my last. Comment or question would be regarding the basin for the stormwater runoff. It would be my understanding that if you run. If you, if you build a retention basin, that becomes a wetland forever and a day. And if you put it all underground, it still become, it remains upland. For future use. So that's just an observation of mine. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Yeah, sure.
So I'm going to respond on the question about the garbage. It's anticipated that each home will have its own containers that they will be. Putting out every, every week. We're not going to have a central dumpster. And then I will, I don't, I don't know if Brian is prepared to answer the question about the basin.
Can you, I'm sorry, but right, but I guess Jimmy has also big concern about parking a number of bedrooms. I'm just concerned about parking, not the school is not my, not my problem.
Right, I, I think that it's anticipated that the homeowners are going to be using their garages and that there are several spaces for guests. I don't think we're anticipating that each home is going to come with four cars. We just wanted to demonstrate that because we don't have. Guest parking elsewhere on the site, that that there is room on each site for visitor parking.
All right. Brian, what was you saying? Sorry?
Well, I was just getting to Jim's comment, if I follow it. Sometimes. These retention basins can become wetlands, vegetated wetlands. Is that what you're talking about, Jim?
Sure.
Yeah, if if they're not designed, maintained, constructed properly, too close to the water table. Or something to that effect, but retention basins are designed to drain dry. Over a period of time and not support wetland vegetation. But yeah, that that maintenance would be required as well of cutting the vegetation and keeping that down.
Why, why then they not doing the chambers? And have a yard, because I do agree with Charlie's comment, but the third. On now. One of the comments, I forget which one. There's no recreation area in the whole project, so if you do the chambers, you gain a lot of, a lot of. Recreation area, plus you don't have that, that steep eight feet retention pond.
Yeah, we discussed that early on in the project with the consultant Scott Blagden, who's worked on a number of these projects. He spoke with a contractor, did cost comparison, as you know. Underground chambers are considerably more expensive. The above ground chambers. Sorry, the above ground or the open infiltration basins are easier to maintain. As another benefit. These homes are targeted for, as Lynn has mentioned. You know, to try to get empty nesters or not attract a lot of children to the neighborhood who would need common open spaces like that. So it primarily comes down to a cost factor for the project.
All right, let's move to Richard. Richard, what do you think?
Well, I did read Charlie's letter also, and he has quite a few concerns, so I hope they answer those. And I guess the only other thing is I'd like to request the local residents. Was that what I read? That she said. Or who requests the local folks to buy that?
What's that, Richard? Oh, oh, okay, about the five houses? Yeah, you'd like to have housing to do it?
Local, it said, she said that I believe that there was a thirty percent or a seventy percent, she can put that back up. But it just said that there was a request, somebody could make a request, and I'm just making a request for that.
Sure, so I think that he's speaking to the seventy percent local preference, and in your decision. You can absolutely put a condition that they. The applicant request seventy percent local preference from the subsidizing agency.
The state will not allow us to do hundred percent?
No, the maximum they allow is seventy percent.
That, that is exactly what you put in the Penrose decision, and so we're glad to do it again here.
All right. Chris?
Well, I have the same concerns as the other board members with recreational space, the parking. That, that piece of property goes over to Cranberry Highway, right, with twenty-eight there? Does it, does, do both sides? Because I saw a small portion on one of the site plans there that. Does, does it go the whole length there of that property on twenty-eight? I just didn't want to see that development from twenty-eight. Are they going to kind of block it? Or? I know, I see a fence was mentioned.
Chris, I can answer that question. I can answer that question real quick. That was, that was a single parcel that was divided into three parcels. There are two commercial parcels fronting Cranberry Highway, and this is the third parcel, and it's fronting. Red Brook Road. It has no frontage on Cranberry Highway. All they have is an easement for water.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. And my other comment was, I wish there were more than five units going to go to. Our ten percent.
The what, the ten percent, Chris?
I wish there was more than five units on this twenty unit complex. I wish there was more than, more than five to help bring us up to that ten percent that we, that we need.
Okay, Mrs. Sweet, I don't, I don't see if, in the, like, the application. Pro forma, do you guys, do you guys, do you guys present the pro forma? I can't find it.
Under the statute, pro formas are not required at this point in the process. They were submitted as part of the project eligibility process.
Okay.
The, there's a difference between the way that the state allows rental housings. Rent housing to be. Allowed on, accounted on the subsidized housing inventory for rental projects because they're so scarce. They actually allow all of the units to be counted. So actually, all of the units from both the Penrose and Dakota projects are going to put. The town probably within spitting distance, if, if, if not over the ten percent. But rental projects have all their units counted, even though only twenty-five percent of them might be affordable. On homeownership, all, again, these aren't our rules, these are the state rules, only. The actual ownership units are counted on the SHI, and I'm not sure if Mark wants to add anything to that.
Right, right now, the SHI is showing that your denominator yields the ten percent requirement of nine hundred eighty-eight units. With the Penrose project added in, you have eight hundred and thirty-eight subsidized units. So you're still a hundred and fifty, sure. I don't know, I don't know what the other project will give you.
Yeah, the Dakota project is, because I'm actually working on the, on the market studies for it, is. I believe it's sixty, sixty and thirty. I think it's around a hundred and fifty units. As well, and phase one and three are going to be closing in, in May. So those units will get counted on your inventory in May, and that's. I think it's like sixteen thirty-four, so maybe ninety units will go on. So I think when I looked at the math, it did look like those two rental projects were going to get you over. It just, it takes time. They have to pull building permits and get built.
Right. But, what, you guys acquired this property on two thousand twelve, right? It looks like here, the deed I see in two thousand twelve. Amalaka, is that, is that you? Or TGCI, Amalaka, Alalci?
So the underlying entity on this is the Grossman Companies, which has a very large lending arm. And they acquired the property through a deed in lieu of foreclosure. They had. Lent on, on, on the property. So that is, just so that you know, who the, kind of the humans are underneath those strange initials. And that would, and the principal is David Grossman, who unfortunately could not be here tonight.
Yeah, so, so you, do you have a, so who has a possession of the property?
The applicant owns the property, so they already own it, so there's no, no purchase and sale agreement because the applicant actually owns it.
And is the applicant TGCI, Amalaka? Who's the applicant?
That is, that is the applicant, the, the.
All right, so what I'm trying to get you to, I, it seems that he owned it, and Mr. Grady's saying that it doesn't become pass effective if you do the chambers. The leaching, the drainage leaching, like underground, it becomes. And the finance, the numbers will not work for you, but you, the land stands you less money. And if you go over twenty percent, you got to give it back anyway, so. Have you worked the numbers? So if you do underground drainage, the chambers. See if the number will work?
This is a very tight project economically to start with because of construction costs, as you can imagine, lumber costs are going up. Daily. So we did, we did review the numbers to use a different kind of a drainage system. And at that point, the project becomes uneconomic. And that's, again, some legal implications around that, that I'm going to, you know, defer to Mark on, but. We were not able to get the numbers to work to make a project that would be. Worth, you know, at the end of the day, in layman's term, you know, worth constructing. It, it's a large amount of money to change that drainage system.
Okay, and, and, Mr. Counsel Boboski, you don't, you don't think we could look at the pro forma? We're not allowed to as a board?
Well, the regulations at this point have been changed so that when we get to the final. Decision-making process, if you ask us to do something and we claim that it's uneconomic. We can have a, an arm wrestle over whether or not the pro forma supports our position or not. But it's way too early in the process. I don't know what else is going to be added in terms of costs here. It's premature to do that in the first meeting.
All right, thank you. We're going to go to Veronica.
I don't have any questions at this time.
I don't know. Okay, I want to pass it to, before I go to the public, I want to pass it to Mr. Rowley. To go briefly, I don't know, I did read his comments. I don't know if the board member read it. I'm sure JAF read the comments. So Charlie, you want to brief us and quick on your comments, which a lot of them I do agree with?
Okay. I had a couple of questions at the beginning. I believe it was mentioned that this is age targeted. But it's not age restricted, correct?
Correct.
So the fact that. It's not age restricted means that there could be children in this development?
Yes.
I mean, you're not saying there won't be. It's, it's not like a retirement development. It's, so it's not age restricted. Okay. The second comment was that in the proposal booklet, which I have here. It shows three different style buildings. And I only saw two represented on the screen. The original, what I have in my documents, there were the Berkshire. The Standish, and then the Winslow. And three of the buildings were shown to have the garages, not shown as you saw it on the screen. But garages that were separated and out on the wings of the building. There are three different dimensions. There was a sixty-four foot overall dimension on one set. Seventy-two on another and eighty on another. So the question is, have you removed that third style of building?
Miss Sweet, who answered that?
I mean, I'm going to defer to Craig. I know that our presentation had the Winslow. The Standish. And the. Brewster.
Right.
And Craig, I just wanted to.
You only showed two.
No, I showed three. Would you like me to bring it up again? I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'd like to see the ones that show that the garages are on the ends of the building and not in the center.
I think that comes from, Lynn, this is Brian, I think that comes from, if you go to. The information through the town website. And you look at the Standish. There are. Two options of the Standish shown. One shows the connected garage and one shows. The garages being separated as Charlie's referring to. So I don't know if those were uploaded in error to the town's website.
They were. This is Scott Blagden. Those, the ones that had the garages on the exterior have been eliminated. They were. Included in one of the PDFs at one point. In error, but they are not part of the submission package. There are three plans. But all three of them have the garages in the center. None of them. That are in our final package have them on the exteriors.
I'm, I'm looking at the folder that, that was submitted to me. As a part of the practice review, and there's clearly a set of buildings in there that showed it, so. If that's not the case, then okay.
No, that's what I'm saying. That, that's, that was a mistake. The ones that have them on the exterior were not supposed to be, they were in the PDF, but they were not supposed to be included.
Okay.
I, I can make sure that you have, I will, I believe I've sent to Ken the PowerPoint presentation, which he can post. But I can also get you the three, the three plan sets that we're showing here today.
Well, it, it really doesn't matter at this point because. The plan set that I got from GAF does not reflect that third building with the garages on the wings. So that's why I made a comment in my letter. So it's, it's not relevant to the, to the project at this point. So, so long as it's not a part of it, then we don't need to address that. You did mention that there was going to be private trash pickup. I assume that everybody's aware that there is no such thing as private trash pickup. Now you have to go through the town. And you either get a sticker to go to the place up in Rochester. Or you have to. Go by the. Get the approval or you sign up for municipal pickup. So just to make that as a point. So it isn't necessarily strictly private. So just to bring that up. To get to one of the more important details, I think that. You have already mentioned or discussed the drainage. And comments have been made to say that it's more expensive and beyond your reach to do so. But I would encourage you to take a look at that. And I did not come up with a specific design, although I know that there are. Possibilities that you could explore. That perhaps would reduce the length of pipe that you'd have to put in the ground. You could perhaps divide the drainage up into such a way that you would reduce the volume of water coming down that road. A part of it would include putting in some simple roof drains, dry wells that would capture the roof runoff. Because your drainage calculations include that. The majority of the site goes to that hole that's at the end of the, at the end of the roadway. So you could reduce some of the runoff that goes to that by simply putting dry wells around the roof. Downspouts, small dry wells, or even stone strips along the foundation. Which would capture that runoff and reduce what goes to the street. The other thing you can do is to. At the first point where you have catch basins in the road, you could depart from going down the road with the, with a line. And go off to the sides with perhaps some leaching pits, which would not take that much space. There's room enough in, in between some of those buildings that you could do that. That in turn would reduce the amount of runoff that's going to the hole. And then if you reduce the runoff going to the hole, maybe there's a possibility you could put in some. Subsurface infiltration in the circle, which would open up that entire area. That's now going to be subject to an eight-foot hole. And a, and a chain link fence around it right next to one of the larger buildings. So. To simply make a statement that it's not economical. Without providing the board with some documentary proof. Or going through the exercise of at least coming up with an alternative design and see how it works. I think you're, you're selling this short to the board, and I think you ought to. My recommendation is, Mr. Chairman, is that you request. Some documentation that shows that it's not possible to do something that's a lot better than leaving an open hole at the end of that road.
I do agree. I guess we'll have to get to that point and, and see if they could give us the pro forma. I'm wondering, Charlie, before I go to the public, do you want to add anything else?
Uh, the only thing is that, uh, the only thing I'd mention, I guess, would be that, um, Jim mentioned that the easement was for water. I, I, uh, believe that's for sewer, Jim.
Right, so.
It's labeled for sewer. Uh, the only other thing I would mention is that since this is a condominium project, you're not gonna have a street layout. It shows layout lines, but they're meaningless if it's a condo project because your frontage will strictly be on Redbrook Road. There's no separate frontage for each of these houses. They're not gonna be divided up into ten different lots. It's all common land. So the frontage exists on Redbrook, and basically what you have is a driveway that will be constructed to road standards, essentially road standards. That's what it is. So that being the case, um, I, I think that it would be possible to perhaps stagger the setbacks a little bit. Uh, the way that this is set up right now, if you were to take a look down that road, you're gonna see, um, forty different garage doors. And that's about all you're gonna see because they're all in a straight line. So even if there was a, a slight adjustment in the setbacks, I think you could probably accommodate that because the twenty-foot driveway that you have, which is allotted to parking outside the building, is outside the limits of that proposed layout. So it gives you a lot more room to get to the actual pavement than what you're showing. So I think that simply removing that layout line, you're really talking about a twenty-foot pavement with, uh, uh, one-foot berm on the east side, then the additional space, uh, which you could use for maybe adjusting those setbacks. So, you know, this, this has really been, um, pushed to the limit in terms of the size of the buildings and the amount of adjustment that you can make either in the front or the back. And looking at the plan now, if you look at the amount of limited space that each one of these owners will have for any kind of outside activity, if you take that, uh, dock area to the right away and dedicate that to some sort of, uh, passive recreation, either, you know, a couple of park benches or a small gizito, gazebo, or fireplace or something where people could get together, that would enhance the project immensely, especially for some of the market rate prices that you're proposing to, to ask for this. So I, I think there's a certain amount of things that could be done which would enhance the look of it rather than a straight line with, uh, perfect rows of buildings that are identical.
Alright, uh.
Was that had you, what you had in mind, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I had in mind that ground the road in the middle and do underground chamber in the cul-de-sac. Stay away from Redbrook Road, move the houses back. Stay away from Redbrook Road, looks to me like twenty or thirty feet, but go towards the retention pond, move the whole project, like maybe or, uh, about forty, fifty feet from Redbrook Road, put couple of retention, couple of chambers by Redbrook Road and ground the road in the middle and put the rest in the cul-de-sac. I mean, it's been done before, it's feasible. It's not that much more money what they, uh, or how they think that. I don't know if they're contractors there.
Uh, I don't know.
Like you said, that makes big difference. I mean, you could space these units a lot more between each other if you use that retention area or, and you'll have a lot more yard.
Well, I, I don't know how much you could actually, um, adjust the grading toward Redbrook Road because most of it pitches uh, from Redbrook Road in a southerly direction. Uh, they don't have a real high point in there that they could go to. And they're at a three-quarter percent pitch right now, which is the minimum standard.
Yeah, the existing conditions.
Yeah, I, I don't think that, uh, there's much of a chance for doing that. What you'd put at Redbrook Road for stormwater would be minimal. But you could intercept it partway down, which is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, uh, if you look existing condition, Charlie, it's Redbrook Road, that's forty-four, and the retention area right now, forty-four. So you're pretty much flat. I mean, it goes up and down inside the property. So you do have, I mean.
There are ups and downs there that, but they're minor. Uh, there's a couple of holes there. Um, but actually.
Trying to say is, uh, Redbrook Road is not higher than the property, so they could pitch down the beginning of the property. They could pitch, they could use all that fill and crown it in the middle. That suggestion, anyway, let, let Brian think about it.
Yeah, I, I think it would, I think it would raise the road in the middle quite a bit, but that's alright.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see that retention pond go see more yard, more spacing, or some they have to explore and look. Uh, just keep in mind, Mrs. Sweet, bring it to your people and listen, uh, I guess Brian listening, so he can hear that. Al- also, we haven't seen, uh, any stamp plans from G A F Engineering. All, all these plans I have, it's not stamped unless I don't have a late version. Brian?
No, uh, we will get, uh, any revisions will be stamped.
Okay, also the, also we'd like to see, uh, landscape and architect, that's the by, bylaws, I, uh, we cannot, we definitely, I'm not willing to give a waiver on our landscape and arch, uh, landscape and architect. We also like to see a stamped, an architectural stamp, Mr. Mitchell. Are you the architect, Mr. Mitchell?
I'm the owner of C M E Architects. We have two architects on staff.
Yeah, we'd like to see a, 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 a stamped plans for all the, the models, the, I guess, the Brewster, the, this, what's the name of the plans?
Standish.
Yeah, so we'd like, um, whoever, whatever you guys, uh, propose, it has to be stamped by li, by licensed architect.
Sure.
Uh, the board, any other comments before we go to public?
Can I ask for a question? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
I'm having a little problem with the, uh, reception tonight. Um, I, I'm just like a little more info, uh, on this forty B. I believe that this was brought up a couple of weeks ago. And I believe that even when we hit the ten percent, it's only for a year. And then they can put more in. So, I mean, am I, am I confused, or is ten percent only a target for the conversation?
No, ten percent is a safe harbor. If you hit ten percent and you stay over ten percent, and you will only go under ten percent if one of two things happens, that the census changes and you go back under as a result, or units come off because there's an expiring affordability restriction. And that, that happens periodically, uh, particularly with older projects that didn't have paperwork like they do today. But once you go over ten percent, that's a safe harbor. That, that's a statutory safe harbor.
Well, I have a question on that. Um, if you, if, if I could ask the attorney to, I think, Mark, if you could elaborate further. So, so if Wayham gets to ten percent, are we in a region with other towns? What if we're in, what if we're with Marion and Rochester and they're only at three percent? Do we get to ten and we're, we're safe, or are we lumped in with them and they can say they don't have enough, so we have to take more?
No, you, you're, you're safe if you get over ten percent regardless of what Marion Metapoy said.
Who is that?
Bobrovsky, where? Hello? Somebody speaking? Run a good your phone, your.
We can hear you, Alan.
Sorry, Naz, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the forty B law, the way it's written, uh, we get a one-year apprieve when we get to ten percent. If we're in the region which is way under ten percent, they can come back with another forty B. If you want, you can check the law.
I, I'm sorry, but that's not the law. I'm well familiar with the law. If you go over ten percent, you're in a safe harbor as long as you stay over ten percent, regardless of whether the town next to you has one percent or nine percent, you're over ten percent. You can invoke your safe harbor and you can reject or accept a forty B application at that point in time.
Well, again, from, from what I have from Serpent, what I have from Mass Municipal Association, I'm gonna disagree with you, sir.
Uh, Alan, I, you and I know each other. I wouldn't steer you wrong. This is.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I'm just telling you what we've been told by the state, et cetera, with the forty B law. They've been trying to change this law for years.
Person who told you that, I'll have a very long conversation with.
If I may, if I, we're, we're not, we're not, I'm not, none of us is a judge to, to solve this issue. So that, that have been taken different ways. So it's gotta be argued on different platform. Yeah.
So it's just interest, just interesting to know, and maybe at some point during this, um, process, it would be nice if, um, and again, it's, it's a little bit of an imposition to ask, but if, if, uh, Attorney Bobrovsky would be so kind as to supply us with the, with the law so we could look at it ourselves. You know, we, we don't wanna go on H S A either. We're not, I'm not mistrusting your word or Alan's word. I just think that because it's in question, it would be nice to clarify it.
It's easy to do. It's spelled out in the H A C regulations. I'll be happy to provide that to you.
Thank you very much.
And, and, yes, Richard.
And again, I asked for the information and it sounds like we don't really have it. So as a board, as you said, sir, I would really love to be clear on this, uh, before any more forty Bs come along, so we don't hear it. That's all.
I'll do my best. Thank you, sir.
We definitely don't have the ten percent, and I hate to tell you, you're never gonna reach it. So it, it always adds up. It just, it's designed not to be reached unless you make dramatic changes.
There's fifty or sixty towns right now, or at ten percent.
I know, we, we have a different situation in Wayham unless we make dramatic changes and things. But that's not what before us. So that being said, let's, uh, I want to say before I go to public, yes, sir, Chris.
Um, I, I'd also like to comment on the, um, I guess the waiver of, um, of not getting permission and a permit from the, uh, the sewer commission. Uh, I think with those things going on with the sewer these days, I think, I don't think we should be able to waive that.
Well, the, the comprehensive permit is just what it says. It's a comprehensive permit. It's all local permits rolled into one. The only exceptions to that are Conservation Commission Order of Conditions under the state regulations, the state building code, and other state regulations that cannot be waived, like sprinkler system regulations.
So, so, so the town has to spend more money on our sewer system, um, for this project?
That's not the way the law works. I'm more than happy to send the board the Hilltop Preserve case, which is the lead case on infrastructure improvements in a forty B project. I can send it to, uh, Ms. Raposa if that is an easy way to get it to you. It's interesting reading. I invite you to take a look at it.
I, I was just concerned because I know that we have some, uh, a moratorium on, on the sewer right now. So that was my concern. Thank you.
I, I know that.
If, if, if I may interfere, I know, but unfortunately, the four, the forty B projects, you cannot, it, like Mr. Counsel Bobrovsky said, eh, it's kinda, you can't say no to it. And you wanna fight it, you can fight it. Sewer Department can fight it. It's definitely, I, I personally don't wanna fight it. Let the sewer fight it. But, uh, let's go forward right now. It's getting late. Uh, so, I need, before we go to public. Okay, we're gonna start going to public. I'm assuming nobody's here for the project. Anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of the project? I hear none, so.
I have a question.
Yes, Sandy.
Yes, thank you. Sandy Slaven. Um, I know we've had this, I've had the discussion of the Affordable Housing Trust. I guess the same question. Is there any place for the children to play?
We've already discussed that.
Yeah, well, this is one of the thing, if I may. This is one of the thing Charlie suggested, and I suggested we should get rid of that eight-feet drainage hole and create more space for recreational. So hopefully they could address this issue next time.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing, I just wanted to make a comment. There's about sixty-five homes that are on the S H I list that are about to come off. So that will really do a job on our ten percent.
You're not gonna reach that ten percent unless you do dramatic changes in.
And I'm saying.
Unfortunately, unfortunately.
There's about sixty-five units that are about to come off the S H I list as of next year. So that's going to really do a job on us even further.
Unfortunately, that's how it works, unfortunately. Like I said, this is needs a master plan, plan, but the town has to address it. Has to approach it different ways. Uh, I mean, that's sound would.
That's more than Littleton Drive would offer us.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I address this question about the outdoor space?
Yes.
So each unit is gonna have its own, um, deck out back in its own backyard for its private use, just like a single-family home would have its own, own backyard. So I, I just, I, I feel like that's kind of getting lost in the discussion, and I, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I know it doesn't answer your stormwater management question, but, but there, there is outdoor space for every unit.
That, Ms. Slaven sees that. She, it's a small, she thinks ten, fifteen feet is small, which I think it's a small, but that's besides the point. That's why we'd like to see that pond, that retention pond gone. I wanna go to the public, so give them a chance. So we're gonna start with the public, uh, who is here for, against this project?
Terrific.
Hmm. Okay, hello, any, anybody against this project? Okay, so we're gonna, apparently, we're gonna continue this pro, this project. Uh, any, Mr. Bobrovsky, any like legal, uh, like clarification, if you don't mind sending to everybody, put on, let's send it to the board, send it to Mr. Slaven.
I'll, I'll send it to Mr., I'll send it to Mr. Buckland and.
Mr. Buckland, any disagreement on the ten percent, although it's not the case, maybe it's nice clarification for everybody to know. If you could clarify what, uh, your theory.
I'll do that. I'll do that, and I'll send some information about the, uh, infrastructure improvements, including sewer.
Okay, uh, so you said on the water, you couldn't get any easement for, to loop it with the, with the barnacle bells or the other lots?
Um, I don't know, is Scott still on the phone? I think he had those conversations.
The Water Department, this is Scott Blackdon. The Water Department had asked if it would be possible to check with the, um, Garden Homes, Garden Homes Estates next door to see if there's possibly a way to connect with them and loop around, maybe get a, get a hydrant put in. And I, I did try to contact them several times, um, but I was, was not able to, uh, get in touch with them to discuss that with them.
Have you approached the Barnacle Bells?
Um, it wasn't, there, there wasn't, it wasn't brought up. It wasn't recommended or brought up. There was no discussion about looping it in that direction. I think the only reason it was brought up was there was some question about the, whether or not there would be some benefit to looping the water through Garden Estates and maybe getting an additional hydrant over in that area. That's what the con, that's what the comment was when it was discussed about looping. It was, it was strictly, but potentially for the benefit of looping it through the Garden Homes Estates and maybe getting a, maybe be able to get a, get another hydrant in there.
Yeah. I don't think you're gonna be able to do that. Uh, I mean, if they insist to go on twenty-eight looping, you have, there's two other lots you could approach and the Barnacle Bells. There's three people, you can loop it to twenty-eight, but that's sound, you have to work with the, with the Onset Water Department, how they wanna, as well as the Fire Department.
Yeah.
Have you guys?
Yeah, might have, actually, it might have, actually, now that I'm thinking of it, it might have, Lynn, I don't know if you recall. Actually, it might have been the Fire Department, because I know part of the discussion was about getting a hydrant in there. So it actually might have been.
It was, it was, it was the Fire Department's request. We were, figure a way out, uh, to loop, loop the system for them.
So, so I have a question. There's a sewer easement going out across the commercial lots, going out to Cranberry Highway. Why can't water and sewer run in that same easement?
I'd have to, I'd have to see the text of the easement in order to answer that question. It may be limited in scope.
Limited for sewer, you think?
I haven't seen it, so I have to look at it.
Well, if it's not limited, they could do it, like, so separate them with concrete, then they could do it.
We'll take a look at it. We'll take a look.
We could look at it.
Yeah, check it out. Alright, I mean, that being said, I guess we're gonna continue, apparently.
One more question before we, uh, get finished, if you don't mind, Naz.
Sure.
I remember in the slide presentation that, um, Mrs. Sweet, uh, presented, it said by right, they have four lots, uh, by the area of the land. Is that four, two families or four single families? Do you know?
Um, so the reason that, that we do that is, um, again, um, related to the economics. Um, it's one of the numbers that Mass Housing uses to calculate those fifteen and twenty percent numbers that, um, Mark had mentioned. So we, we basically, uh, said that by right, they can do four, four single-family homes. That's, that's that we, that we, that we looked at it, and that plan was really done for appraisal purposes for Mass Housing, for setting the as-is value of the property before the forty B permit.
So, okay, so it's, it's based on the cost of a road and frontage to create four Form A lots?
Uh, Form C.
Form C.
Um, the four, the four lots are allowed by right, so the appraisal was done based on what the value of the land would be for those four lots.
Okay.
And they were single, as far as I know, they were single-family home, and I'll just, I'll just make sure.
How many lots, you said? Four lots? How many lots, he said, four lots?
Yeah.
Actually, three is a double, six units, you could, conventional, you could do six, three duplexes, six units, but it doesn't matter. Uh, single lot, you probably could do more, a lot more, but it doesn't matter, I guess, that's not what you're here for. I'll tell you quick.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just curious, um. Just to, you know, just so people have a feel of the amount of density that is being gained or lost, or whatever you want.
Yeah, four units minus the roads and stuff, probably four units or five units, is right, or three duplexes.
Three duplexes.
Yeah. Roughly, I mean, don't quote me on that.
No, but, but right, but you, but to get, to get three duplexes, you'd have to make a town-approved way. And they'd all three would have to have frontage, so they'd have the cost of a street. Added, it it'd become less economically feasible.
Not necessarily, you could do driveway and get a special permit from planning board as a, as an apartment building. And you could fit the seven apartments, seven condos.
Okay.
Anyway, uh, once the next time, Mr. Mrs. Sweet to come back, when's a good time? When, when you guys could up, like, like.
Yeah, so I, I think we're gonna need, um, I would say that we're probably gonna need a month to respond. To the peer review comments and take another look at this, um. Is the hi- is the thirty-first, um, good? One, two, three.
It'll be, it will be April twenty-first.
Uh, on the tenth today, right?
Today, then, we could do seventh?
The seventh, let me just make sure.
Or the twenty-first, I'm sorry, 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 my mistake, so the fourteen or the twenty-eighth, sorry.
Um, let's do the fourteenth, that's five weeks. I just wanna make sure that everyone on our team. Um, that Brian and Mark can do that.
I'll make it work.
Okay.
That's what we'll target.
All right, we will target that, we'll try and get documents in, um, you know, in advance of the meeting, and if um. You know, we need to have a working session offline with the um, the engineer, we'll do that as well, but we appreciate. Um, all of the input we received tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks, everybody. Uh, we're gonna make a motion, sorry. Can I have a motion to continue two dash twenty-one TGCI America? There it goes, the name, I'm looking who owns it. Uh, continue it to April fourteen, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jim, do I have a second?
Second, Richard Sample.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye, Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, Naziai, so we'll see you on the fourth theme, eh, April fourteen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, continue public hearing, three dash twenty-one, Hall of Ventura, variance, five ninety County Road. Mrs. Ventura here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, your public hearing is still open, so now you have five members, so you could state your case.
Okay, hi, everybody, I um, I have applied to put in addition on my house. My son and his family are moving into my home, and so I need an additional living space. Um, the variance, first of all, was because I'm not fifteen feet from my neighbor's property line. But I have gotten the okay from him, I'm ten feet from his property line, he's fine with that. Um, and I have the letter from him in the package, um, that he's, that he's okay with that. I also um, was told that an accessory apartment is not allowed. But I believe it's because maybe they thought I was putting an oven, I I had written kitchen. On my plan, but it's actually more a kitchenette, there is no oven, so I'm, I don't know if that is the reason. For the, for the second reason for the variance. And so that's it, the addition is thirty by twenty-two. And um, I'm hoping to go forward with this, this addition plan.
All right, let me do, and now, I I do appreciate your neighbor, he's okay with that, doesn't mean the board's okay with the setback variance. And a lot decides, you, if you're gonna build the second dwelling, which is, it looks like a second dwelling, this is. This is, it's, it's a hard variance, especially in the zones not allowed, so if you were in the MR thirty. And you ask for one, sometimes the board, if they feel a, a family member, an elderly person moving in, they feel like. Given an illaw, but you, you're not even in an allowed zone for a, for accessory apartment. Or a second unit, so it's not even allowed in there. I wanna pass it to the, to the, the board member, see what they think. Uh, you could, you could expand your house, you could make a big addition, but. I, it, it cannot be a second home, it's, it has its own entrance and stuff, you could do this, you could make. Twenty-bedroom house if you wish, as long as you're septic and supported, that's between you and the board of health. So I'm gonna start with Mr. Sample, Richard, what do you think?
I've given it a lot of, uh, a lot of thought in the last week, and uh, and again, now, like Nazie said, uh, it's kind of not permitted. There's not too many places in town that the zoning laws allow you to have that apartment, and I feel if we. Go that route, that we're gonna end up creating more of a problem. Um, and again, I, I guess that's, I guess that's all I have to say about that is. That it, it's not in a zoning area, so. I'll leave it up to the board, I'll leave it up to the board to ask any other questions.
All right, very good, Chris?
Okay, so, uh, so the addition, the problem here is, is it that she's putting in like, it looks like a, like a little kitchenette? And um, is, is, is that why we're thinking this is a separate apartment?
If, if she makes it, i- if she builds it as it looks like a second unit. It has its own entrance, its own egress, its own access, even if she don't put a kitchen. It's kinda considered a second dwelling, that's what I'm trying to say.
There's, there's no door that goes in between the two buildings where it's connected, or is, is it totally separate? Can you get from, from the side, from, from inside your house?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's access from this house, yes.
I guess.
It's in the, it's in the basement. Yeah, and I, and I, right, I, I can certainly put one. I certainly can easily put an entrance from the living room over.
If, if it was, I think if it was more of, of like an entrance from your living room, and more of maybe like a family room with a wet bar. And something upstairs, then eh, it's definitely would not be considered, I guess, a separate apartment.
Okay.
So, so I guess that those would be, be my comments.
Okay, and I'm, I'm open to, to change whatever I need to change.
Yes.
Make it, make it, okay.
Mr. Ventura, Mrs. Ventura, what, what Chris saying, you probably wanna come up with the architectural plan showing your addition. And it's a, it's a definitely a no-no for a kitchen, an addition showing like it's a part of the house, it doesn't look an apartment.
Okay.
And I mean, I mean, uh, but you could, you could, and if you make an addition, you don't even have to come. Uh, to us, but you have to meet setback from the neighbors as well.
Yeah.
You know, so, I wanna go, continue to, Jimmy, did I, did you make a comment?
Yeah, I'm not ready to ask any questions.
Veronica?
Um, I don't have any questions right now, but I uh, just would like to say, I'm. My thought is similar to Mr. Samples, where I think um, something like this, you know, these types of things come before us. From time to time, and um, you know, we open the door to a lot more if we um, say yes. To something like this, um, when it's not an allowed use.
Yeah, especially like I said, in this area, in R sixty, that's, it's, it's, it's definitely not allowed. Like I said, if you were in R thirty, MR thirty, you might have a chance. Going back to Jimmy, Jimmy?
Um, I'm looking at it here, and I'm. As far as the setback from the sideline, if I, if I'm looking at your lot, it's one and a quarter, one point two eight acres. And it looks like you have a driveway in from County Road, I don't know, it goes back to what Cross Road, is that another side street? You say you've got a.
Yeah, it goes from county to cross.
So, so, which one do you use? Do you use County Road, or do you use Cross, or do you use them both?
Both, both, equally.
But it's a gravel driveway, I just looked, I mean, what would be the, would it be the end of the world if you took that whole grade addition? And put it on the other end of the house and moved your driveway fifteen feet to the. Um, I'm looking to the north, and, and then you wouldn't have to worry about the setbacks, and you could just call it an addition, and you can share the kitchen, and.
The problem is my septic is over there.
Uh, your septic is over there?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was, that's a legitimate hardship or question, I mean, that changes everything.
Okay.
But, but you have a, you have a survey plan stamped, he does, how come he don't show the? I mean, he stamped it, it doesn't say existing condition here.
Plan to a company.
He shows existing deck, existing dwelling, I'm surprised he doesn't show the septic.
Nazie, could I ask a question?
Yes, yes, Mr..
Uh, Ms. Ventura, uh, when was your house built?
It was built in nineteen twenty.
Okay, um, so the septic system, unless it's been upgraded since then, probably.
It hasn't.
Predates, predates the requirement for an extra bedroom. How many bedrooms do you have now?
I have three right now.
You have three, and how many would be there as a result of the new construction?
There's, there's, yeah, there's, I originally had put another bedroom, but I don't, I know. When I resubmitted the plan, I didn't put an additional bedroom, but the septic has been upgraded since nineteen twenty. I don't remember the year, but it was about fifteen years ago, we had a, a new.
As they, has the Board of Health looked at this plan, because even though you're not planning a bedroom, there are definitions for a bedroom. That uh, one or two rooms might comply, make it comply with the bedroom. So, i- if, if you're going to consider some alternatives, I would certainly recommend that you go see the Board of Health. Uh, and make sure that whatever your floor plan shows, that they're not gonna all of a sudden hit you with a four or five-bedroom addition.
Okay.
I think most likely they would, especially with the square footage. I, I ca- anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project?
But I don't know what happened, I don't know how much they eat.
A public, anyone wanna speak in favor?
What happened, cause the door is going, you know?
I hear, hello, somebody speak. Okay, anyone wanna speak against this project? I hear one, so, so, apparently, Ms. Ventura, you, you need four board members to say yes for you. It doesn't sound like you have four. So you best, but first of all, you gotta see where your septic is, and if it handles, and.
Right.
It seemed that the board having, like, what I proposed, like, you're not gonna be able to get an apartment. You just gotta make an addition, a few more bedrooms for your family.
So I, so could you just, um?
I think we need more detail on what's being built, other than a gray box on a, on a site plan.
Well, this is the deal, if you wanna go for a variance and for a vote, you're gonna need architecture plans. I don't recommend that you go spend the money to do that, because it doesn't seem you're gonna begin. I recommend you, like Mr. Rowley suggested, check where your septic is, and like Jimmy suggested, move your house. I mean, the addition, I wouldn't call it an apartment, the addition to the other side, and, and then you don't need to come before us. As long as the board of health is okay with that, and because if you keep it the way, what it is, you still need a variance from us. And I don't think the board's gonna give you a setback variance. I know myself not, and it seems like one other person's not gonna. So you have some homework to do.
Okay, so you're saying move it to, to where the septic is?
Uh, we don't know where the septic is, you should have, like, Mr. Uh, Jim would explain to you better, Jimmy explained to her better. Yeah, that's his idea.
So, so, because of what you presented to us, we, we don't know where the septic system is. To be, to begin with, first of all, um, and, and secondly, we don't know. That the system that you have in the ground right now is gonna satisfy border health requirements. For the additional load you're gonna put on that septic system, you're bringing your son and his family into your house. Maybe your system is adequate, maybe it's not, but we, we kinda need to know that, and if, because if you're gonna. If the board of health's gonna say, yeah, sure, you can add four more bedrooms, go dig up your yard and put in this monster system. That monster system may stop you right there in your trash, and you may say, whoa, we can afford the addition, but we can't afford the addition and the septic. So then, the whole point's moot, but if you're gonna dig it up and change it, then you can move it, you can move the driveway. You can move the septic system, you, you, you might be able to use the same septic tank. But your SAS soil absorption system has to be larger, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I've heard enough of this jazz to know. And that being the case, then you put your addition on the opposite end of the house, you got it on the south side, you're gonna put it on the north side. Move your driveway however many feet you need to, you've met the setback requirements. You, you're gonna have to meet septic anyway, I mean, if you come back to us and say, no, my system can handle eight bedrooms, and. Well, then, we, we're talking a, a different story, but we don't know that right now, so you, you're, you know, we'd be granting a variance. Without full knowledge, so we really do need to know where the septic is, and if it's gonna, if the existing system. Is gonna meet the needs that you're gonna put, the demand you're gonna put on it. Not that we're the board of health and can grant that stuff, but we're the guys that can say, yea, and they on the, I mean, if it seems like a hardship. Because you have a monster septic system, and you want, that's why you're forced to put the addition there, well, that might, that might impact our decision. But right now, I can't see the need.
Okay.
And if I may, Ms. Ventura, it might, uh, it might change our decision only on the setback, not for another apartment. If you have to put that, so if you wanna put your addition to the neighbor, that we can only give you a variance if we feel. That you have a hardship only on setback.
Okay.
Okay, so you got some homework to do, talk to Mr. Brain and see where your septic is, and go from there.
Could I ask you one quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I were to reduce the size, so that I am now fifteen feet from my neighbor's property line. And connect it to my house with a doorway that goes from my house to the, the larger room, would that make a difference?
Your setback is, your setback is twenty, not fifteen.
Oh, twenty?
Yes, according to the plans the engineer gave, you know, your side setback is twenty feet, you need twenty.
Okay.
Then again, like I said, if you would just put in an addition, and this, it's a hardship, like Mr. Akabachi said, your septic is there. I might, the board might consider a variance for setback.
Okay, I know the septic is there, when they pump it, I, I know it's right there, so.
I think for your best interest, interest and your family to move, I mean, you got a big lot, just move it. I don't know, you're gonna have to do more studies.
You can, I, I can, to, to, to give you a little bit of help, I know that you can walk into the board of health and say, I'd like to see the as-built. On my septic system, and they've probably got a picture, and, and you might even be able to scan that and include it with your, and that might be enough. To help us understand.
Okay.
But, but it'll also say what capacity it has, and you, you, you really wanna, again, it's not up to the zoning board to, to say. What kind of septic system you should have, but it is up to us to say whether you should be able to be that close to your property line. And, and we're using the septic system as a hardship if we were to lean towards granting you what you've requested. And I could tell you, I personally don't have a problem with a single-family home having two kitchens. I grew up in a farmhouse that had three kitchens, but we were a single family, um, so I don't have a problem with multiple kitchens per se. As long as you can walk from one kitchen to the other kitchen, or from the upstairs kitchen to the basement, we, we had a, a kitchen for cooking canned goods only. Out of the garden on the farm, and we had a kitchen for cooking formal meals, and we had a kitchen for cooking in the summer only, so the house wouldn't get hot. But it was still one house, one family, and it's, so, uh, don't let the kitchen thing hang you up. Uh, I, I personally don't have a problem with a house that has multiple kitchens, of course, I have a cooking background, and you know, you can't give me enough kitchens. But nonetheless.
So from your point of view, um, where do I need to go from here? Do I need to, I need to talk to the Board of Health. About the septic, which I'm pretty sure is a. I need to talk to the Board of Health about the septic, which I'm pretty sure is a four-bedroom septic. I'm almost positive of that. And then do I need, do I need?
Engineer, talk to the Board of Health, get the as-built, see if they can put it, that plan that you've shown us, see if he can pencil that in or, you know, better than pencil it in, but draw it in, come back to us. Show it where it is, show it the capacity, show us how many bedrooms you're, what do you add, you know? If you come back to us and say, I'm adding a, an addition that's the same size as my house and it's, and it's one big room. And and, you know, we're not silly. We know that after the the day is done, there's gonna be interior petitions and there's gonna be multiple bedrooms, and so is the Board of Health.
Okay.
You know, you know, so show us a real plan of what you really. Plan to do so we can look at it and in good conscience say yay or nay. Right now, you're asking us to say. Yay, um, uh, 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 and too, too little information. Too little, we, we, you know, we need something in the file to support our decision.
All right, and yeah, and I I wasn't sure how to go about this, so I'm, I'm learning as I go too.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, uh, give Ms. Ventura a little bit more assistance here with the Board of Health.
Yeah.
In terms of your internal space and how you would propose to divide that off. Board of Health will consider any space that can be enclosed for privacy. And has a certain square footage attached to it. They will consider that as a bedroom, whether you use it as one or not.
Okay.
So just remember that, that as you count the bedrooms and what you propose in the addition. If you can enclose it in such a way that it can have its own privacy, they will count that as a potential bedroom.
Okay.
So just look at that, make sure you understand that when you go to them and give them the right information so that you're not, you're not getting blindsided by something later on.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, so when, when do you like to come back, Ms. Ventura?
Every next meeting?
Two. One month?
Yeah.
The April fourteenth, you said was the next one?
We have another meeting in March, or is this it?
April fourteen, yeah. We are meeting the end of March, if you wish, on the twenty-fourth, twenty, twenty-fourth, March, what, two weeks from now? Can you make it?
Um, I think I need the time. I think I wanna put more time and thought into this. Yeah, so April fourteenth is good.
All right, let me put you to twenty-one. Okay, can we have a motion to continue three dash twenty-one, Ventura, five ninety road, County Road?
Make motion. To call. Seconded by Jim.
Okay, we have a motion to continue till, um, April fourteen, and by, with that, Richard or Kristin?
Oh, Richard.
Richard, second by Jim, all in favor to continue, say aye, Jim?
Aye.
County?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazia, so we see you on April fourteen, fourteen. Thank you, Ms. Ventura.
Thank you.
All right, last one, four dash twenty-one, Wareham Retail Management LLC. Set one, set Toby Road.
Guys waited a long time just for a drive-up window.
All right, who's presenting the case worth the waiting?
Hi, this is Lindsay Wilson. Uh, I'm counsel for, uh, Wareham Retail Management. Unfortunately, my camera. Uh, on my video is not working, so I'm only a voice on a phone. Though you probably wouldn't wanna look at me anyway, so. Um, also with me tonight is, uh, the project civil engineer, Derek Redgate. Um, representative of the owner applicant, Brandon, uh, Schramm. Uh, Derek Roach from Vaness Associates with respect to traffic, if you have questions related to traffic. Uh, Bo Nguyen, the architect, and Kathy McVane, representative of Chipotle, the intended, uh, user of the space. From which we are talking. Um, procedurally, this is a three-building development that has, uh, been in development for about two and a half years. Uh, we have gone both before your board previously in connection with. Uh, obtaining a drive-through variance for the Starbucks that's, uh, being completed hopefully as we speak. Uh, previously, and we have been before the planning board now on three occasions, including, uh. Getting a further approval just to this past Monday night, uh, for modification of the site plan. That relates to the Chipotle building three development that we are presenting tonight about as well. Um, so we did a full, uh, modified site plan review with the planning board. Uh, as it relates to, uh, what Chipotle calls, uh, their Chipotle lane. It's not a full drive-through. There isn't a order board, uh, or traditional queuing, uh, as you would think with a drive-through window. It is solely related to, uh, picking up orders that were made either, uh, online through their app or by phone. Um, and is in particular something that they're emphasizing and rolling out during the COVID period. Um, so tonight's application is solely with respect to adding this additional pickup window. Uh, in connection with finishing off, uh, this development, uh, with our final building. Uh, Derek, do you have a little bit of additional color related to the logistics of the drive-through window?
Yeah, just, just, just quickly, um, you know, as Lindsay, Lindsay mentioned, um, this is a three-building development. And we've completed, uh, two of the buildings, and I'm gonna zoom in on which one is the actual third building. So you can see which one it is. It's the one furthest away from, from the Walmart and closest to, uh, to Cranberry Highway. So if you're looking from Cranberry Highway, um, the left side, the twenty-five hundred square foot space. Is what we're proposing for the Chipotle. Um, so to the left of that, we've incorporated, uh, what we're calling the pickup window or drive-through lane. So this, the development was very, very, the site plan was very similar to this in the sense that. The, um, that the building was larger. It was seventy-two hundred square feet. And we've reduced the size of the building to be able to squeeze in this, um, additional drive-through lane. Uh, for the Chipotle. So again, we're here tonight, um. Truly just the, um, uh, a use variance for, to allow, uh, a drive-through and there is. This board did approve, um, the drive-through for the Starbucks. Which is, um, shown on this plan and is over on the, on the left-hand side, closest to, uh, to Walmart. So that's kind of a quickie. Um. Uh, we, we have outdoor seating as well. I just wanna mention that. That's sort of a quick, um, overview of what we're looking for here, but I'm happy to answer any, um. Any questions you may have.
Hey, Kenny, didn't, didn't, uh, the drive-through was approved from, from previous town meetings through special permit only? And that was the line Toby wrote?
It was only approved for the, the general commercial district and not the CS district, which is this district.
Okay.
We had an article in this town meeting for spring that has, uh, allowance in the CS district as well.
Okay.
Town meeting.
All right, no problem.
And, uh, one other thing to note is, it, one other thing to note is that this board has previously. I'm sorry, this is Lindsay Wilson again, counsel for the applicant.
Go ahead.
Um, this, this board has previous, previously granted ver, uh, the drive-through variance. For prior iterations of the development of this outcarcel, uh, that didn't move forward. Um, and when you had granted to your comment, when you had granted the Starbucks, uh, use variance. Uh, in the decision itself, you even noted, uh, that it was apparently an inadvertency. That the, uh, zoning change didn't include the commercial strip district.
Yeah, uh, just clarification. Thank you, Counselor. All right, uh, I wanna start with Jimmy.
My, um, my comment, yes, I I believe the intention was for this location to be. Eligible for a drive-through window, and I believe. Um, the current bylaw says that you can't enter off of a highway. You gotta come off private property, which you do, so you qualify u- under all that. But I also am concerned looking at this, um. For the first, really kind of, for the first time, I'm looking at it tonight with a different eye. I'm all for Chipotle, I'm all for them having the pickup window, um, specifically under current, um, conditions with, with the World Health. But whenever we approve a drive-up window, we provide for, um, an area for stacking, if you will, for cars to get in a row, because if there's. One car, it's no problem, but if there's fifteen or twenty in a row, it can become a problem, and I don't see any provisions for that here. And once there's a drive-up window, and I don't, I don't propose that Chipotle's gonna fail. But they could, or a menu board could go up real easy, and if we don't consider stacking. If twenty people wanna eat lunch at the same time and pick it up at the same time, where are those twenty cars gonna be? That's, that's my.
Yeah, I, I can speak to just the operation of, this is Kathy McVane. Yep, this is Kathy McVane. I'm the real estate manager with Chipotle. I can, uh, speak to the operation of this. So one thing that, um. Which is why we call it more of a pickup window is, um, we don't have menu boards, we don't have speaker posts, money is not transacted through the window. So a typical drive-through would have, you know, three points of traffic stopping before they even get to the window. Um, our customers have to pick up their meal at a certain time because they've already ordered it through the app. Um, our, our ordering system limits the number of people that can order at a particular time. So that there isn't a backup to the window. Um, if they do pull up, you know, we just hand the food, food out, the window, there's, again, there's no money or conversation or speaking happening. Um, prior to the window. If their food is not ready, they would either like leave and come back. Or they would pull into a parking space and wait for it to be done, and we would either bring it out or they would go back around. Um, so there is a traffic study done, and and the gentleman that did that could probably speak to that better. Um, but our history is, you know, one, maybe two cars in queue because they're waiting to get their next order. But it's a very timed, um, process. And again, all they do is pull in, we hand it out the window and they leave, so there's not those stop-off points along the way.
I guess.
This is Lindsay Wilson again.
Mr. Counsel, Lindsay, one second. Mrs. McVane, I think Mr. Akabachi, he, he's not doubting your theory, but he's wondering, say. You guys, uh, for some reason you tried to pull out of Massachusetts and all of a sudden we have a coffee shop. We don't wanna name any coffee shops, and then there's a long line. That's what he's concerned about.
Yeah. I mean, that would be up to the owner of the property. I mean, if, you know, if permission is given with the intention that it doesn't turn into what some people may call a traditional drive-through.
Yeah.
That's a condition that's up to, you know, the landlord to.
I, I, I have a.
Yeah, Chairman, if I may, um, the, the applicant's perfectly comfortable. That Chipotle is a long-term tenant signing a long-term credit lease. And we would be more than happy for there to be a condition that would preclude the installation of an order board. Um, however you'd wanna phrase that, that's not the intent, um, nor would we want to do. Uh, nor would you want to build, uh, the site. So that it'd be insufficient for a prospective future tenant. So, uh, if the, the concern is limiting it solely to the pickup window that's. Being proposed, uh, we're perfectly fine with the condition that will give you the assurance you need.
Um, I guess my comment through the, through the chair again is, uh, and and through our town planner and anybody else that can answer me. Are we granting, uh, uh, this, um, special permit to the applicant or to the property?
To the property, the variance. It's not going nowhere. Once you grant that.
Okay, that's, that was, okay, so my, that was the, I mean, cause I, we've all seen the commercial where the car drives up and the. Domino's cut, throws the pizza at them like a frisbee, and if their window is closed, they go. Out there with their windshield wipers going and salad on the windshield. But I know that Chipotle can hand out, or you, you, you drive up to the window, you say number thirty-four, they throw your bag at you and you're gone. So I, I get that there won't be a line, but. My, my concern is, I don't know, how, how we condition it that it doesn't transfer to. Um, another, you know, I guess, I guess I, I would say that I would, I'd be willing to grant in favor as long as that there's a, um. A deed restriction that there's no order board.
Let me, let me explain to everybody how this is gonna go. Uh, with the legal term of it, this board is gonna grant whether they're gonna allow a drive-through or not. We're not the site plan authority there. That's gonna go back to planning board for the, for the, for the site plan. We just gonna say, yes, you could have it. Drive-through or not? The other one is the planning board. If they were coming from scratch to us, it would be one-stop shop, but because the planning board issued the permit, it has to go back to them. And they could sort out all these things, just like we did with Starbucks. We just say yes. Just with the, with the, with the drive-through and they went back. If you guys noticed Wendy's, it was one-stop shop. It was our call, so we did review everything. And this matter is gonna go back to planning board, so.
Okay, then, then that answers that, that, that satisfies my concern, and I'd hate to stop them from coming. So. As far as I'm concerned, the question is moot.
Okay, very good. I'll go to Rich, Chris.
I'm, I'm all set, no questions.
Veronica?
I basically have the same questions that Jim addressed, um, but I did a- also, um. Wonder, um. How much interior seating there was and how much parking was for it, because. If people are going to have to wait to go up to that window, they're gonna have to wait somewhere, cause not everybody arrives the minute things are ready. Sometimes they're gonna get there early. Or whatever, so I just, the capacity for parking is gonna be, I think, impacted a bit. So basically, how much interior seating is there? For, in how many parking spaces are?
Well, we, we. If, if I may, again, like originally, the site plan was granted by the planning board, not by us, so they have all these information, the size of the building. And they could dictate all these rules that just were, they wanna know from us if we give them a.
A window or no window?
Window or not. Now, if they go to planning board and the planning board say, you know what, you have your three parking short. They could come back to us and we could give them for three parking spaces short, but, but that's how. The flow of the permits gonna go.
Just for your own comfort though.
How can we make a decision with, uh, no information? Without the information that we're looking for?
Again, what Nazia's trying to tell you, Veronica, is that the planning board already made that decision. The only decision we have is whether there's a window or there's not a window. We get.
But didn't they make the decision without a window?
No. They made the window.
Yes, without a window.
Without a window.
One, one at a time, one at a time. Kenny, you want to, that's Kenny says.
The planning board received a site plan that included the, the, the pickup, uh, drive-through, uh, lanes shown on the plan before you. What you have to do is make a decision on the variance as to the use variance that a, a, a drive-through lane is, is permitted. And the, uh, planning board then, uh. Completes their, their, uh, site plan review and approves the, the, uh, project as, as shown. One of the things you can do, though, under, under the state law, is to condition the use variance. For the, uh, for, uh. Restrictions on the time of it, of its application, so that you could say that if. Chipotle was to, uh, leave there or. A, a new use was to come in, that they would, that the, uh, new owner would have to, uh, have, come back before the board for reconsideration of the drive-through.
There you go. That's a good, good way. So I guess we could, yeah, like, Charlie, if I may, let me listen from Mr. Sample first.
Sure, go ahead.
Richard?
Oh, good. The board is doing a good job covering this. Thank you.
All right, very good. Let's go to Charlie. Charlie?
Ken, uh, remind me, did the board not close the hearing Monday night and make it subject to the receipt of the, uh, variance from the, uh, Board of Appeals?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, so they won't have any more deliberation on this, uh, but they simply made their approval subject to your vote. So I would think that, I would concur with Ken, that if you decide that you want the window, you could condition it that it would not be utilized. As a standard drive-up window, the way that Wendy's or Starbucks is, that it would simply be limited to a pickup window. The way that it's been described, and it was the way. And it was the way it was described with the planning board. That was their understanding that it would operate that way and not as a standard window.
And we've offered that on this call already. We're perfectly comfortable with that.
Okay, very good. That answers most of the questions. Let's go back to Jimmy.
I'm, I'm, I'm really satisfied. I'm, I'm a Chipotle fan personally, and I'm really satisfied with the intent and the ability for them to perform. And Ken added that we can condition our approval that if the use should change from this particular operator, that they would have to come back in front of the board. So I'd, I'd move to approve with that one condition and let them go. They've been sitting here patiently waiting their turn all night.
All right, very well. Before we go further, is there anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project? Anyone against this project? I also hear none. Before we go any further, I mean, any board member wanna add something? Are you okay with what you heard? So I guess the planning board did all the work for us. We just have to say yes or no for the window, that's all.
Well, I, I do wanna make a comment. I think in this situation, as Charlie noted, that the planning board has, has approved this, and it's coming before us, so we're the last stop for this window. So that being the case, my questions haven't been answered, and apparently they're not going to be. And I think that is something that should be considered in situations like this. When we're the final stop, we need to have all the information to make an informed decision.
Hi, this is.
But.
Go ahead.
You're right. Let me, let me explain this to you. I, I guarantee you, the planning board made them jump hoops to get to us. So I'm sure they went through everything before they sent them to us. So I, I have no doubt they did all the, their studies on it. And, and so I don't see the, and then another thing on the variance, you can't accept the use variance. You cannot condition a variance. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, you can condition a variance.
In a certain way, not conditioned like the, it's not like a special permit, in other words. But for us. Sorry, go ahead. No, for us to go back and alter the planning board plan, this is completely different, different thing. I mean, I mean, we could do, we could go through it again, and they could show you, you could go through the traffic studies or all these things. And if you wanna see this, I don't have a problem.
Honestly, this project isn't, I don't think the impact's gonna be so significant. But I'm saying in general, for future projects in this similar type situation where we're making a call, we're making a vote, we need to have all the information in front of us. I mean, I'm not doubting the competency or whatever the planning board has decided or put into place. But we also, to make our own competent decisions, have to have all that information.
You're right. And but usually, when it's one stop with us, we do all this. But I mean, we, we, I'm glad they did all the work, so. Let me, so, Chris, you wanna make a comment? Anything? Are you good?
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
Richard, you good with that?
That's sure.
All right, applicant, Mr. Winn, are you with them? Bowen?
Yes, sir, I'm the architect for the project.
Oh, okay. And Alan, you wanna say anything? I guess Alan fell asleep. I guess not, Mr. Manise, you wanna say something? I guess he's not listening. And Mr. Scram, Brendan, wanna say something? What?
Yeah, we're, we're the landlord, and I'm really appreciative of all the time you guys have spent on this. We're really happy to be here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Brendan? Derek Rhodes, you wanna add something? You good?
I'm just the traffic consultant, I'm all set, thanks.
All right.
Naz, sorry, I have my stuff off. I'm in favor of the project.
All right, thank you. Mad selectman Alan Slaver. And Mr. Redgate, you wanna add something?
I have, I have nothing more to add unless any of the board has.
All right, attorney, Ms. Attorney Winslow, Wilson?
Lindsay Wilson, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it possible you could draft a decision, send it to our town plan, and let us review what we're speaking about a use variance?
Draft a decision was prepared.
We have been working with Ken on that. Go ahead, Ken.
Kenny, you have it?
This was prepared, we've modified it, and there's a final copy. It just doesn't have all the conditions. If you wanna add a condition to the, to the decision.
You're very confident.
Happy to draft that for your review.
Mr. Buckland, you confident of your board, huh?
I've been hanging around with you guys enough time to know you.
All right, very good. All right, that being, so I guess if the board wishes to go, say yes on that matter, you, you could handle the draft. And you and Attorney Wilson, and we'll go from there, right?
That's right.
Okay, very well. That being said, before, any more discussion before we close?
So to be clear, this is gonna be presented, is this continued? And Ken's going to show us the draft? Or how is this gonna?
No, it's, we're already agreeing what's on the draft about the condition of the use variance. So that working out, we go there, read it. Every member, when they go sign, they just go through a quick, what we talked about, the use variance that Jimmy discussed, and what Attorney Wilson agreed to, and Mrs. McVane. And with what they write, what you see, you agree what they, what they said, just sign it when you go to town hall.
Okay, so it's gonna have the language that Jim talked about regarding the menu board?
No, it's gonna, it's gonna be there regarding if they change, say, to a coffee shop, they have to come back.
Change operators, change.
Change operators.
I think it also needs to contain language regarding a menu board so that during their use, it doesn't turn into that. If that's not prohibited from the get go, that could change.
Sounds right.
Okay, sure.
She's, she's.
You okay with that, Mr. Wilson?
They'd, they'd have to really change their way of doing business quite a bit, the way Chipotle operates.
That's fine, we have no problem. We have no problem drafting it that way, too.
Yep, I got it.
Okay, Veronica, you good?
Yep, thank you.
All right, that being said, can we get a motion to close?
So moved.
I have a motion to close. Mr. Akabachi, do I have a second?
My second, Chris Conti.
I can, Chris, all in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
And myself, Naz, the aye. It's closed. Any discussion before we make a wish?
Make a motion to approve for walk up window as discussed, conditions to be drafted as discussed.
Okay, everybody's okay with that? Any discussion on that?
Drive up window, correct?
What's that?
Drive up, walk up.
He said walk up.
Window, yeah. I don't, I won't, I won't beat you up over what terms are used.
Drive up window, yes, pick up window, drive up window. Okay, so we have a motion to grant by Mr. Akabachi with the conditions of the use variance that Mr. Buckland and Attorney Wilson gonna draft. And we'll have the chance to, to review it and sign it, review it before we sign it, all the board members. So do I have a second on that motion?
A second, Veronica Debonis.
Second by Veronica. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's Carrie's. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. I'm sorry, ladies, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Thank you.
Night, all.
Okay. On the other, on the other business, we have some discussion on the changes in state law in chapter forty eight. I guess Ken sent you some emails about how the states see the future like special permits and housing. I, I read it a quick, but I let Ken explain it to you more. Go ahead, Chris, Ken.
The, 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 the governor signed an economic development bond bill January fourteenth that applies immediately. That says that there's some changes in forty eight, the land use regulations. And there's a change in the way zoning biolaws are adopted by town meeting. They can be by a simple majority if they have certain uses within them. It also changes the way special permits are issued, that the granting authority doesn't have to have four out of five votes, as you do now, but could do it as a simple majority, which would be three out of five for any of the following. A multifamily housing project that's located within a half mile of a transit station where ten percent or more of the housing is affordable as defined by the, the Act. Secondly, that a simple majority is available to be approved of mixed use development in the centers of commercial activity within a municipality such as a town center, provided that ten percent of the housing is affordable. As again, as, as defined by the, the state. And a reduced parking space, reduced parking space requirement for residential units is also available to use a simple majority vote. So on the site plan reviews, if there's reduced parking, you, you could do that as a simple majority vote. In addition, they put in the requirement or an allowance that anybody that appeals the decision of the, of the board going to court, that they could, the court could require that the plaintiff, the person filing the complaint, provide post a security or bond, which it could be an amount not more than fifty thousand. So I think this will prevent some frivolous lawsuits that come, that get filed every once in a while. This is a requirement for issuance of a bond for whoever complains.
Is it agreed by a decision?
Agreed by a decision, correct.
Okay. So if I understood the first two or three things you read, if the town meets the ten percent, but they're putting a forty B project in within a quarter mile of a railroad station or a public transportation, they can still get a forty B in?
They have to have ten percent or at least ten percent of the units that be affordable. And what they get is not an in, but a, an allowance that the special permit could be issued with three out of five votes rather than four, as required now.
Okay, so, so they're, they're getting rid of the problem where if only four people show up and we, we don't have that fifth person, we have to continue and waste a lot of time. A simple majority is gonna get us done.
That's right, but it's only for those particular things.
Specific items.
The housing, the downtown center, and the reduced parking ratios.
Naz is smiling, he wants it for everything. He says.
No, no.
Just let the chairman have the deciding vote on everything.
No, no, I'm just smiling as I announced. Well, remember, this is only for a special permit, not a variance. He still needs a major, four, four votes for the variance, right?
That's right.
Is it, is it, is it a lawyer or not yet? Attorney General signed it?
The governor signed it and said it was effective immediately.
Ooh. So let me ask you this. And this, did we, did we close Ventura? I mean, not Ventura, what you call it? Tyler Ave, we, we denied it and closed it, right? Now, let me ask you, in the case of Tyler Ave, that's a variance, sorry, never mind. Sorry.
Tyler Avenue, if it wasn't, if it was a special permit, it would have been a simple majority.
What, yeah, but it's not near public transportation, is it?
I don't know, could be a bust.
Things, Veronica.
What's that, Jim?
That was two different things, but I just tied the two together because it doesn't, the public transportation was one thing, and the, and the, the ten percent housing stock was another. I just, in one instance, you could be over the ten percent and still do a forty B if you're within a quarter mile.
Oh, no, I didn't, I thought he was saying, well, if you could clarify this, Ken, I thought you were saying that majority vote to pass on a multifamily that has a ten percent affordable amount of units, if it's near public transportation, it just needs, is that not right?
That's right, there are two, there are two criteria for a multifamily housing project that is within a half mile of some transit, and it has ten percent of the units as affordable.
Then it just needs a majority to pass.
There is a simple majority to approve, yes.
And that has nothing to do with the, with the, with the forty B threshold of ten percent of our housing inventory?
No, it does not.
That's where I was mishearing you, okay? That's, I'm glad Veronica pushed that issue.
I get a question, if you could clarify. So our downtown area does not have a mixed use allowance, does it? Doesn't have residential and commercial? So that wouldn't even apply to us, right? Because that would be an automatic variance unless it's existing.
Right, that's why there's a bylaw being presented to Springtown meeting to include mixed use development in downtown.
I think, I agree with that, it should be.
Naz, could I have five minutes of the board's time?
Sure, absolutely.
I'll make it four and three quarters.
All right, I'll cut it short. I have a concern, and I'll just express my opinion. And Mr. Chairman, you, you can take it for, for what it's worth. You had a variance issue tonight, which came before you. And this has happened a couple of times before, where I have not seen the applicant demonstrate the four criteria for a variance that's required under chapter forty eight. And I didn't hear anything in the vote which said that you were granting the variance because it met that criteria. I'm just concerned that if you don't do this and make it part of the public record as a part of the public hearing, you may end up at some point with a very controversial project in which you want it to go one way because of the way you feel. But if you don't register that information, that it could end up being filed as a request of the Superior Court to overturn your decision. I'm just wondering if you would consider making sure that when people come before you for a variance, that they submit to you documentation that shows that they meet those four statutory requirements under chapter forty eight, and that it becomes a part of your meeting minutes, and it's a part of the final vote that you take when you declare the variance that's gonna be signed. That's, that's just a concern that I have. I just wanna throw it out there for your consideration. And that's all I had.
Thank, thank you, Charlie. I, I guess you're talking, I mean, we had that use variance now.
Yes.
We had the five nine E County Road, we're not gonna discuss. And we had the Tyler Ave, which we, which we denied based, that did not meet the statutes.
Right.
I guess, I guess with the, with the, with the, with the Chipotle, it, it, that, it, there is a hardship for.
Well, that's something that was not determined, that's my point. That they should make the case that it is a hardship in some way. They made a half hearted attempt at it, I remember, when they went for the Starbucks variance. But you really, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, that you need to have something which is part of the public record that says that they have requested that, and they have actually supported their case by documentation, so that you have something to rest your opinion on. And that it needs to be expressed somehow in the final document that's approved by and signed by your board, so that if it happens to go to a judge, they're not gonna throw it in back in your face by them saying, well, where's the case for the variance that was made? I, I just don't wanna see the board get in trouble because there's nothing in the record that shows it, that's all.
I, I totally understand. I don't think the board will get in trouble. I think the applicant will be denied a variance, we all know that.
Well, you might get in trouble if you approved a variance that wasn't done in the proper way, is what I'm trying to say.
I believe in the argument they presented showed me a hardship personally, but I don't know the rest.
It may be, but there's, there's nothing in the documentation that will, if I wanted to go in there and look into the public record, what would I see? There would be nothing in the file that would indicate that they submitted any kind of documentation to back up their request for the variance. And that should be done, in my opinion, for anybody that comes before the Board of Appeals.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss, go ahead, Kenny.
The decision that was drafted included a discussion on the hardship and the four criteria for a variance that was used in the same for the Starbucks drive through and the Wendy's drive through. As to whether or not it's gonna be upheld by a court of law is a question for a judge. Using the same criteria on all, all three of these applications that have come forward.
Danny, I guess Charlie's saying. Kenny, I guess Charlie is saying. I, I, yeah, I guess Charlie wanted, want to say that it should have done publicly, which is probably the board should have. Well, well taken, we'll, we'll make sure next time. So hopefully, we don't get in trouble this time.
Yeah, I don't want to see that happen. You have enough on your plate, you really do.
On the trouble, we're not always in trouble.
Nothing left on my plate. I left my plate clean.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll, next time we'll make more efforts to read it on the record. Thanks for the comment.
No, it's a good, it's a, it's a valid, uh, observation.
Absolutely. And I did, I did, I, I mean, in, in Webby's case, I did mention that didn't mean the statute requirement of a variance, but. Anyway, so any other discussion the board would like to discuss?
Yeah, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I'm gonna. That, you know, with, with Chipotle and coming before us and stuff, and when they've gone before the planning board and then they come. Uh, in front of the zoning board, why is it that we aren't provided with all of the information? That. We need, it, like, so if anybody's coming to ask us for a variance, they have to. You know, um, give us a lot of different. Documentation and information and, and in this case, because they went in front of the planning board, it was like they didn't have to give us anything and I don't. Know that we could, this is not a big deal, this case, I mean. This parking, hopefully it's not going to be an issue with congestion, but. We don't have the answers to a lot of, I, I wanted to know how much seating is inside, how many parking spaces were they required to have? The traffic study wasn't, you know, I guess we did have the traffic study and that wasn't really discussed in detail. Regarding how much more parking that they think that that drive-up window is going to. Create, because it's gonna create a need for more parking and that. I mean.
I think we did have all that.
Listen, you could have asked for this information and I'm so glad the planning board. Did it for us. In different cases, if it's all one-stop-shop with us, we look at this information. And quite frankly, I don't get paid enough to, on these hearings to, to review all these things that the planning board already spent days and hours for. We try our best, I mean, if you guys notice, every hearing will go two, three hours and all volunteers. Uh, I mean, if they did the work to, for us, I mean, we're on the same side here, us and the planning board, so I'm sure they did a good job and.
That, that was.
If there wasn't no studies, I agree with you, we should have studied, but I know they went through it.
Yeah, the, the parking was discussed in detail at the planning board meeting. Uh, as a matter of fact, what's under. What's under construction right now, if you're familiar with the site. There's another row of parking that is between the Walmart parking lot and the Aspen Dental, which is going in. That's being done as a part of this project. So the number of spaces that is being provided. Is for the Chipotles, which they gave the planning board a number for that. I forget, I think it was seven or eight spaces that were required. They said that there were a limited number of seats inside, I forget the exact number, maybe Ken remembers. Um, but between the spaces that are there and the spaces they intend to provide. That, that should be adequate. And that, that was a part of the overall discussion that the planning board had. Uh, when they issued their special permit.
Thank you, Charlie. That's what I asked during the meeting. That's what I was trying to get at. And Naz, you said, oh, we don't, doesn't matter, we don't have that information, the planning board handled it. I mean, basically, I just wanted to hear what Charlie just said. That makes me feel a lot better to know.
Yeah, the question that you had tonight was a limited one and that was based on whether or not a drive-up window should be there at all. And, and they did address the issue and they asked in terms of the timing. Um, how many minutes would it take to process an applicant or process the order? And, uh, it was very, very quick. So they were, they were getting people in and out of there very quickly, whereas if you look at what happens over at Wendy's. Uh, you're there for quite a while before you get your order processed. Part of it, I think, is their internal problems that they have there, but it's an entirely different setup. Uh, this one, like she tried to explain, you place your order ahead of time, you do it either on an app or you, you phone it in. So there's no waiting at all and there's no menu board to have to get back up, nobody's making change, nobody's doing any of that. So it is a different situation. There, there's no question about that and it was all a- addressed through the planning board public hearing. And, and there was a whole big packet available for us. I, I, I picked one up and it showed. Yeah, yeah, they discussed traffic a little bit.
I picked one up too, but it didn't have all.
The traffic issues, I don't think are any different than they were because, uh, when you go back far enough. This entire site, which includes the Starbucks, the Aspen Dental and this portion of the project. Was included in the original traffic study that was done for Walmart. So the traffic volume that was to be generated from this. Project, and that includes all three buildings, was included in the traffic volumes that they predicted. For the improvements that they made at Toby Road and Route twenty-eight. And by reducing the size of the building a little bit and reducing the size of the Starbucks somewhat. They actually have reduced the amount of traffic volume that would be coming here. So there was discussion about that. But the, to make a long story short, the volume of traffic coming from this project. With the retail spaces and the potential restaurant that was included originally. Uh, shows that there was adequate, uh, traffic movements for the lights and so forth that were put in at Toby. And twenty-eight, as well as the number of spaces that are shown on the site. So that, that was a part of the history, if that helps you, Veronica.
It does, and, and, um, I know, like, um. That's, that's just the information that I was looking to hear, I guess, before I made my vote, but it did. Didn't matter, I guess. Uh, wasn't, I mean, it was going to be that big of an impact, so I didn't, wasn't like sticking to it, but I appreciate that information.
All right. Anything else you guys like to add? We're gonna start charging overtime now, come on.
What do you want, time and a quarter?
I want to see you lick your plate.
Let's see how big it was on the plate to begin with. Maybe it wasn't that much. When I go to Chipotle, man, they just barely fit. When I get that bowl, man, they just barely fit it all on and then at the end I say more. But, I, I like, ha, ha, anybody here eating at Chipotle before?
Yes.
I, 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 every time I go to Randolph, I stop. But now you, you can't walk in anymore, but i- if you've been to one, you understand that they really probably want you to walk in because. Everything you're gonna have is kind of like a subway. You can say, I want some of this, some of this, some of that, some of this, some of that, more of that, more of that, less of that. And, and then at the end, you know, they, they take your money, but, um, now you have to just call it in, they don't let you in there anymore. And, and you, you do the some of this, some of this, some of that, some of that, but. Um, you do it over the phone and I can see how, I can see how it will not be a problem because. They've got it in a brown paper bag, they've got your number on it. Then you go to the door, if they don't have a window and. You say number seventy-eight and bang, they hand you a brown paper bag and that's it. You don't give them money, you, they, you know, it's very.
I think if things, if things don't change with COVID and we kind of stay a little bit like this, we're gonna see a lot more of these windows, uh, cropping up.
We should. That's why I've been yelling and screaming that we need to fix that bylaw.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be the way in the future, but anyway.
Walmart, Walmart figured it out. Walmart and Amazon, they're, they're, I mean, you can, you can get anything you want at Walmart, just do it all online and. Drive over there and they'll tell you what spot, there's a number, parking number W six and they come out with your stuff. So yes, it's, it's, it's not gonna get less, it's gonna, and people like that stuff, you know. We're Americans, we're lazy.
Yeah, I know, we're not lazy.
Or you're, or you're not lazy?
Lazy. Lazy is not a term in this world. Lazies are asking for retribution and things, that, that's not us.
You're right, you're right. But, you know, McDonald's did change things when you go to one window and scream at them and you get to the next window and you're. Angry if it's not ready already. But you used to go to the window and say, I'll have a hamburger with mustard, relish and onion, and then they'd cook it.
Used to cost twenty-five cents too, huh, Jim?
Uh, yeah, nineteen cents if you want to. Remember the ninety-nine cents and change, change back for a dollar, burger, fryer and a coke?
Yeah. That was a year or two back.
Yeah, that was a year or two back. I got a menu board from the old A and W that I used as a piece of wood to fill a window and somebody was looking at it. They thought it was a joke. Tuna roll for seventy-nine cents and, you know, hot dog and. It's been a week or two.
All right. You guys wish to adjourn?
No, we're just having so much fun here with this conversation and, and you know, I'm just trying to think of a way to kind of irritate Veronica.
No, you have to change, Jim, you don't.
If you disagree with that, that's all what you have to do.
Oh, oh, okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
No, because I want to irritate you now.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye. Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Nazzy, aye. I'm sorry, Veronica?
No.
Okay, it's closed.
The eyes are above the nose, the eyes have it.